...of the Town of Los Gatos Planning Commission. And I'm going to call to order the meeting of Wednesday, August 22, 2014. Mr. Paulson, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Commissioner Erickson?
Here.
Commissioner Sayak?
Here.
Commissioner Bundami?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
Vice Chair Birch?
Yes, I'm back.
Chair Smith?
And I'm here. Thank you.
Commissioner Talisfor has an excused absence.
Thank you. And Commissioner Birch, in honor of your being here, could you lead us in the Pledge And just for the benefit of all of you who don't follow these meetings every single week, but Commissioner Birch had had to recuse herself from two meetings in a row because we were dealing with issues that were close to her residence. And so, we haven't seen her in a month. So, that's why I welcomed her back with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Town of Los Gatos strongly encourages active participation in the public process, which we know is the cornerstone of our wonderful democracy. It's also essential to the Planning Commission conducting its own business. There are several ways for members of the public to participate. One is to submit written comments to the staff, and we welcome them, and we always receive them in our packet, and we do, in fact, read them and consider them. At meetings of the Commission, there are two ways to communicate with us. One is any item that is not on the agenda. Fill out a card that is in the back of each of the benches. It's a beige-colored card. And put your name on it, and say that you want to comment to us for three minutes during what we call verbal communications. The second way is any member of the public can address the Commission on any item that is agendized. Please remember that if you wish to address us this evening, you step to the podium, pull the microphone close to you, and you will have three minutes. The yellow light will come on when you're down to 30 seconds. Also, when you fill out your card, as Mr. Shepherdson's bringing one forward, please remember that applicants as well, anyone who's going to speak tonight has to have a card up here with me completed. So, if all of you can take care of that. Also, if I, if you think I would have trouble pronouncing your last name, write it phonetically for me. And if you fail to do that, then forgive me ahead of time for any mistakes I might make with your name. If I could have everyone either shut off, or at least take the sound off of your cellphones, that would be helpful to our engineer in the back who is recording this. In fairness to everyone, I do enforce the three-minute rule, so just know really when that yellow light comes on, your time is really coming to an end. See, our next order of business is we're going to approve the minutes of our August 13th, or we're going, I'm going to ask if there is a motion to approve. Commissioner Erickson?
I will move to approve the minutes of the meeting of the Planning Commission of August 13th as distributed.
And are there, is there a second? Commissioner Sayak?
I second the mo- motion.
All right. And Commissioner Birch?
Do I need to recuse myself based on the topic from the vote? If not, I have read the minutes and watched the video, and I feel-
Then you can vote for him.
Great. All right.
Thank you. So, if everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor? Thank you. I see there are, are there any written communications this evening?
There is a desk item for item number one, which has been distributed.
All right.
And we also have a written communication from a member of the resident who wanted to make sure that the Planning Commission saw the concerns that is not pertaining to any specific item on tonight's agenda or on an upcoming agenda, but the individual did ask that we distribute it to you.
Mr. Town Attorney, then, do we take the time to read that now, or is this something that we just put in our packet and we read it?
Something you can put in your packet.
All right. Thank you very much. And you're going to pass those out now? All right. Are there any requested continuances for this evening? Mr. Paulson?
There are no requested continuances.
All right. In addition to their service on the Commission, the Commissioners also serve on subcommittees that meet monthly and sometimes bimonthly. And are there any reports from any Commissioners for these subcommittees? Commissioner Bundami, why don't we go first with you?
The Historic Preservation Committee met earlier this afternoon, and we considered two items. One was a property at 212 Bean Avenue, and we approved some revisions to the remodel. And secondly, we made some recommendations for a property at 12 Bayview Ave.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Sayak?
Yes, just wanted to report that last Thursday, the Housing Element Advisory Board completed their review of the housing element. This is the housing guide that we need to use for the next eight years. And that is actually coming to the Planning Commission, and then ultimately to the Town Council for their approval. And actually, I believe there, it was inserted into our package, and so you have a draft of that.
All right. Thank you. And do we have a date when that's coming before us, Ms. Pravetti?
We don't have a date yet for that public hearing. It's going to depend on when we receive the comments from the state. We're anticipating either late October or one of your November meetings.
All right. So, now we do move to what we call the verbal communications portion of our meeting. And I only have one card up here. It's Mr. Shepherdson. You want to step forward and identify yourself?
Yes.
Okay. We have several more. Pass them to the staff. Mr. Shepherdson, there we go. That's, that's even better. Let's make sure it's on.
It's on.
No, not on. So, Mr. Paulson, or, there we go.
First of all, I brought my hula hoop. Because the last time I spoke at the North Forty, that was the first question, and actually the only question I was asked. And so, I did want to vouch that it is legit. I just got back from my class and actually left early to be here because credibility's important. Second thing, actually, Commissioner Smith, actually, I wanted to honor you for your store in town, the Domus. I was thinking about that in terms of the North Forty. That would be, to me, perhaps the wonderful place for your store, because I think it was great for the downtown. And if it's competitive with the downtown, maybe that's the kind of competition that downtown needs. I used to get my Christmas presents wrapped at your store and got other gifts there, too. So. Third point, let's not lay, let's not break the golden egg, which is Los Gatos, and that is in terms of traffic. Traffic is exploding, and I'd just like, maybe someone's listening from the council to consider that in addition to you. You are all influential here in terms of the traffic that's exploding from San Jose, our own projects that are coming onboard. Next point would be, I would like for consideration that the level of commercial or retail at the North Forty, that a consideration perhaps be given to the 350,000 square feet that was considered the superior alternative at Albright. That's with about 20 acres. And if half of the project at the North Forty is going to be commercial, then maybe that 350,000 figure makes sense. There's a Yuki underpass of some kind out at the North Forty. I've contacted somebody at Caltrans to get more information on that. I don't know, apparently, the tunnel was destroyed. That's according to the lawsuit that was filed, and it's a matter of appellate record. But if that could be investigated in connection with the North Forty, I think makes sense. Solar, I don't know if that came up in terms of recommendations. I think that makes sense for the North Forty. And I can't really read the rest of my notes. I scroll them so fast. So, oh, the hula hoop class is at the Quinlan Center, 6 to 7 in Cupertino. And I invite you all to come. It's only $6. The new class starts next week. So, with that, I mean, it's kind of light. Sometimes these meetings get very serious, so by being light, I don't mean to be frivolous or disrespectful. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Shepherdson. And I will put the hula hoop business in context because he did show up in his shorts and said he had been at a hula hoop class. So, we Commissioners, I have to say, we did have a moment of wondering about it. So, tonight, he brought his hula hoop. So, just so the audience has the benefit of the bigger picture. Thank you, Mr. Shepherdson. Are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you again.
All right. I'd just say that your Town Attorney also questioned me as well on that.
I just have one question for a speaker, and that is Mr. Paolo. I don't know what agenda item you're speaking on, or none.
50.
Ms. Pravetti, are there any continued public hearings? There are none?
No.
Right? All right. So, we'll now move on to new public hearings, and I will call Agenda Item 1, which is a request to approve subdivision application M14002 and architecture and site application S14010 for demolition of the existing structure and construction of four attached units on property at 550 Hubble Way. By a show of hands, may I have the Commissioners who have visited the property? All right. Thank you. Are there any disclosures by any Commissioner? Seeing none? Mr. O'Donnell, you're in the wrong spot for us. So, all right. So, you're the member of the staff who's going to give the report this evening?
Yes. Erwin O'Donnell, yes, of the Community Development Department, acting as your project planner for this item. As the Chair noted, this is an application for a four-unit development, and four attached units on a 15,000-square-foot lot on Hubble Way, which is just east of University Avenue, just north of Andrews Street. This application, or actually, the site may be familiar to the Planning Commission because you had reviewed an application in July of last year for this that also returned in September. That application was denied and appealed to council. Council upheld the denial of the Planning Commission, and the applicant chose to basically come back with a redesign project that responded to the comments from the Commission and from the council. So, what you have before you this evening is a brand-new application that, based on council's authorization, is being reviewed on a time and materials basis. The project now is an attached product. It's for four units. It is conforming in terms of the Town Code requirements. It is a total of about 26 feet in height. And so, they responded to the comments from the Commission. The project now is, as I noted, attached. It now has both private and common open space for the units, and has additional visitor parking, which was the concern of some of the neighbors that had spoke against the previous application. The project is actually recommended for approval subject to the attached conditions and with the recommendation that the Planning Commission make the necessary findings and considerations noted in your staff report. So, this concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for questions or comments.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Mr. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes, I wanted to ask you about the parking. In the report, it suggests in, on paragraph five, page five, paragraph B, that it says additional onsite visitor parking would make incorporation of additional units on a size lot and configuration very difficult. It isn't clear to me whether you're saying it really ought to have more visitor parking or not.
So, there's a, in terms of the Town Code, the project is conforming with the one-and-a-half parking spaces that are required for a multifamily use. There's also a section of the code that says for condominiums, you would have to have two parking spaces. And then, there's also a third section of the code that talks about guest parking, where you would have to have one parking space per unit, unless the Commission makes findings that because of the type of housing and the uses proposed, that the guest parking that is being provided is sufficient. So, in your staff report, we provided you both of those standards. The project is a multifamily project, so it's compliant with the one-and-a-half parking spaces per unit, as well as the one space per unit of guest parking, if you use that standard. However, if you were to apply the condominium requirement, it would be two parking spaces per unit and an additional parking space. So, under the multifamily rate, it provides exactly the amount of parking that's required. Under the condo rate, it would actually be short two parking spaces. And then, your staff report also notes as additional considerations for the Commission that there's a significant dedication that's being provided, and that there's four off-street parking spaces that are now going to be public parking spaces that previously would have been private.
So, on the recommendation, which is on page eight, it fails to add a finding, which arguably is the case, that notwithstanding that it doesn't meet the two parking spots per unit, I guess, or whatever, what standard you just said in any event.
Right.
We'd have to make a specific finding that the visitor parking as provided, notwithstanding the otherwise requirement, is sufficient. Is that right?
Yes, correct. So, you are correct that that should have been a finding that we should have included.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Commissioner Sayak?
Thank you. I recall it, the last, the last time we reviewed a different iteration on this site, there was significant neighborhood concerns, and my understanding is those have now been resolved?
Yes, that's correct. In fact, your desk item that was provided, was received by the Community Development Department, notes that the person has actually supported the application.
Okay. And when conducting that outreach, were all the people that had spoke at the last meeting were contacted with this new design so that they are able to see what the, this is what we're looking at?
Yes. And my understanding also, and the applicant can speak to that, is they did extensive outreach to the neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you.
I just have one question for you, and it's actually the conditions of approval. It occurred to me that because of the amount of construction that's being done there and the number of children who walk along the university side on their way to both the, they walk, they bike, they skateboard to Fisher, is it, would it be usual for us to put some kind of constraints around the large construction trucks on university and the work being done during what I would call the rush hour?
Certainly. That is a item that the Commission has done in the past, where they've constrained the construction traffic, where they've either moved it out of a particular peak hour in recognition of the school hours, or as part of the construction management plan that is recommended by the Parks and Public Works Department. They've included special requirements as part of that.
So, we could, we would be doing that this evening because it's not in the conditions of approval, right? That would be our recommendation?
That's correct. And I also would recommend asking the applicant if they're able to conform.
Yes, I was going to do that. And then, the second thing, I just want to make sure that the, I know Mr. Cannon's concern with the porch, I know that we did receive a letter saying that the porch has been changed. It's been changed to your satisfaction?
Yes, and I actually spoke to Mr. Cannon about it, and he's happy with the particular design that was submitted.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other questions? Seeing none? Going to open the public portion of the public hearing, and I'm not sure who's speaking on behalf of the applicant. Why don't you step forward? Did you submit a card, sir?
Yes, I will.
Okay. Yes, please do. Identify yourself.
Good evening. My name is Gregory Howell. I live on Glen Ridge Avenue in Los Gatos.
And I just want you to know you have five minutes this evening as the applicant.
I'll be much shorter than that. You'll be very happy.
All right. Thank you.
Erwin did a very good job explaining the project, too, so I won't go over what he's covered. My business partner on the Hubble Way project in front of you this evening is Mark Timotei. The staff report and letter of justification summarizes the evolution of the Hubble Way project, which is in front of you this evening. The design of the project endeavors to satisfy all concerns that have been raised along this two-plus-year journey. We have satisfied all neighborhood consulting architect, staff, public work concerns, as well as many other items raised by other parties. Staff has recommended approval of this project, and this was not an easy approval to earn. Two-plus years of meetings, reports, phone calls, emails, the list goes on and on and on, have been invested in the plans in front of you tonight. We have earned the support of all concerned parties and sincerely hope to earn your support this evening. At this time, I would like to make myself, as well as anyone from our team, available for any questions you may have.
I do have a question of you, sir. Can you just talk to me about those back windows? Maybe you can just refer me to the exhibit number that might have the back. I know that there were, at one point, 14 windows going across, and, and the neighbors were concerned, or the owner of the apartment building. And so, I know it's been changed, but even as I was looking up here, I actually don't see that back.
Yeah, I'm going to leave that for the architect, Rick, here to go over. Rick, Rick, come. Please come up here, Rick.
Okay. Go ahead and step forward.
I'm Rick from Homtech Architecture. Page A3, north elevation. That's, that's the rear of the entire complex. So, the windows are always oriented front and rear and not side, because, and actually, that's in Town Code, we can't have bedroom windows on the side, anyway.
And so, the windows in the back have been changed from the, the design to accommodate the neighbors' concerns. That's what I'm trying to get to here.
Yeah, yes. These are in character to the old house, and I'm not sure which design he was looking at, to be honest.
Well, I was just thinking about the date of your design, and then the date of Mr. Cannon's letter, and then the date of the letter from the apartment owner. So, that's, that's, I was just trying to jive it all together, that what I was seeing was the final, final.
Yeah, the, where it's got a cloud around it?
Yes.
That is the updated area there.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. That makes sense, then.
Those are just bathroom windows, then.
All right. Thank you. Anything further for the applicant? Commissioner Sayak?
Thank you. First, I want to comment on how nice it is to see the design that's in front of us. I know that we've seen many different iterations, and there were reasons why it was denied. And so, just wanted to mention how pleased I am with what you have before us, especially the two elevators. I know that is an issue for those who don't like two stories, but can help address some of these, some of these senior housing issues that we're facing. The quick question I have on neighborhood outreach, I know at the last, the last time it came before us, one of the neighbors that was concerned was Chris Wiley, and I understand she's been called away for reserve duty. When you were doing your neighborhood discussions, was she somehow notified of what was?
Yeah, we had an actual meeting with her, as well as another neighbor.
Okay, before she left?
Correct.
Okay.
And she's in complete support of the projects that are in front of you. Had she not been, I assure you, you would have heard of it.
Okay, great. Well, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
And then, I have, Commissioner Bundami, did you have anything? No. I have just the one question, which is the question I asked about the construction trucks. And it's, actually, I witnessed some construction going on near a school zone, and the big trucks coming in to make deliveries while moms were trying to drop kids off, kids were on bikes. It was, it was pretty scary, actually, to see it happening. So, that's what triggered it for me this evening. So, you would be amenable to a construction plan that limited deliveries by these large trucks? I know I'm being a little amorphous in how I'm saying it, but I think you get the idea.
Yeah, we're always open to, you know, protecting the kids and not hitting anyone on a bike. So, if that'll help with that, we'll be happy to do that, yeah.
All right. Thank you. All right. That's it. Oh, Commissioner Sayak?
And just to be a little bit more specific, in when doing the construction management plan, because I, too, have been seeing what's been happening on the corner of University and Highway 9. So, school usually starts at 8:00. The specific request is 7:30 to 8:00, when you do anticipate any significant construction, maybe having a worker there so that the sidewalk is still usable to those that are riding or walking to school?
So, if I understand the question, if before 8:00, if we have some heavy equipment coming on the site, that we have someone there managing it for us?
Exactly. That can help just stop the traffic and let kids go by.
Seems very reasonable to me.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. That's it, sir. You can have a seat, and we're going to be calling you back, so you can, anything you would like to add, we will call you back after we listen to some other testimony. Mr. Paolo?
Hello, and thank you for letting me speak tonight. I live close by, and I used to live in the area, and it's always nice to see new designs and new things coming up and that are coming from the area. That whole area seems to always be the same type of design. So, something new and fresh is always, you know, enhancing and might look good for, for the area. So, I, I'm hoping that this design can go through and be able to keep, keep that area upcoming and not keep the same type of housing that's been in that area for, forever. So, but, you know, when I see the more poles going up, I didn't know if there was a change in designs, but I'm sure that, you know, after I see, there has been a change, and I just hope it, it will go through.
Thank you, sir. And just for the record, can you state your address?
It's 110 Oak Rim Court.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Paolo? Seeing none, sir? Thank you very much. The next person up would be Mr. Myers.
Hi, I'm Pete Myers, and I have a home at 250 La Malta. And I'm also in support of 550 Hubble Way. I've looked at the plans, and I think they're beautiful, and I think it'll be a great addition to the downtown.
Thank you. That was short. And any other questions? Seeing none? Thank you, sir. And then, Mr. Evans?
I'm Doug Evans. I live at 33 Ashler Avenue in Los Gatos. I've been a resident of the town since 2002, and I, I go to my dry cleaners there on Careful Cleaner on University Avenue. And it was a great sight to see those story poles go up, and, you know, all that mid-'50s, mid-'60s architecture in the area could be a little bit, you know, I don't know, it's '50s, '60s, or '70s, but it's all just straight up and down. It was really nice to see some creativity coming to the neighborhood, and of course, I'm in, I'm in favor of the, the project.
Thank you very much, sir. No questions? Thank you. All right. Let me call back up the applicant, if you'd like to add anything? Nothing? All right. Seeing no further testimony?
Chair.
Yes, Commissioner O'Donnell?
I would like to ask another question of the applicant.
Certainly.
I forgot to ask you this before. One of the findings, you probably heard us talk about it, one of the findings we have to make deals with the adequacy of the parking, notwithstanding that arguably it doesn't meet the letter of one of the requirements. I've heard no evidence this evening on that point at all, which would not help my making that finding. Can you help us out as to why this parking would be adequate?
I can. So, let me kind of give you a picture of where we started from. On the first project we brought to you, we were told we didn't need any guest parking. And so, we went to the neighbors, we went over, and they said, you know, it'd be really nice if you had two guest parking spots. We said, fine, we'll put that in, even though it wasn't required. Through the process, we were told by a previous planner that now we needed two parking spots. And we went, well, we're okay. We have that. Just recently, we learned what you may have learned this evening, and so that was a complete surprise to us. That was new information for us. However, I do have some information for you that I think that will help, and it was kind of brought up by Erwin. We have a rather large street dedication that is about five parking spots that are currently private property, part of this property, and there's signs all down there that say, "No parking, no parking." It's for just this property. We're going to be dedicating that over, and that's now going to become five spots for, you know, public parking. Additionally, there are currently two curb cuts. We're eliminating one of those curb cuts, and so that's going to create another parking spot. So, an argument can be made that really we're providing three spots beyond what is allowed, or what is required, I should say.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. No, sir, no further questions? Thank you. Okay, now, we are going to close the public portion of the public hearing and ask the Commissioners if they have any questions of staff, want to comment on the application, or want to introduce a motion for consideration by the Commission. Commissioner Birch?
I would just like to ask staff a clarification on the parking.
Oh, sorry, looking at the wrong person. Wrong person. Really not used to you being over there. When it's talking about the parking requirement, two places per unit plus the visitor spaces, and you just brought up the point with the street parking, however, does it have to have signage or anything that states that it is dedicated parking for that property?
So typically, parking that's provided in the right-of-way is above and beyond what would be required for a project. So it really is sort of the review of the planning commission to make a finding that the use and the parking provided is acceptable. The way that, if you look at the finding that it's written in, in the staff report, it basically talks about that, based on the use and the parking that's provided, that you can either require more or less guest parking for that particular use.
Yes, Commissioner O'Donnell.
As I recall, Hubaway is a private way, and it's not a publicly dedicated street. Is that correct?
Portions of it.
Okay. Well, this, will we have a dedication of this portion of the property, so that will be, that portion will be a public street?
If you look at it, the applicant is required to provide a twenty-five-foot half-street dedication for a large chunk of the frontage of the property.
And the town will accept that dedication?
My understanding is yes.
So at the moment, I'm, I understand that there are signs saying no parking, and now it will be a public, that portion will be a public street in the town of Los Gatos, and there will be no parking restriction?
That's correct, on that side of the street.
Okay, thank you.
Any further comments? Commissioners, is there anyone that would like to take a stab at a motion? Commissioner O'Donnell?
I will do just that. I would move that we approve the application and find that the project is categorically exempt pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act as provided in Exhibit Two, that we make the required findings for density, which are specifically provided in Exhibit Two, and the required housing element findings for a residential project with three or more units, also Exhibit Two. The architect, pardon me, the project is consistent with the considerations for approval of architectural and site applications, Exhibit Two. We would approve the subdivision application, M14002, and architecture and site application, S1410, subject to the conditions of Exhibit Three, and the development plans, Exhibit Twelve, and that we would find that the parking, notwithstanding, not technically meeting a requirement, is adequate based on the finding, based on the evidence adduced this evening. And finally, that a traffic constraint be added to the Exhibit Three, such that there would be controlling of traffic during the morning and evening school hours. And I think I would rely on staff to determine what those hours are. We've heard some testimony that it was prior to eight o'clock in the morning, but I certainly would trust that to staff. So that's the motion.
Commissioner Birch?
I'll second the motion.
If I might just ask a question of staff. In terms of this, the construction trucks, et cetera, Mr. Paulson, do we need more specific language about what we're looking for? And it's going to be added to the conditions of approval? In other words, do we need to add that specific language?
The only specificity that might be helpful would be if, earlier in the conversation, we heard prior to eight was a concern. Construction can actually start prior to eight percent of town code, so that will be handled duly with this condition and just by town code. If there's something in the afternoon that the commission would like to block out a time period for large construction delivery vehicles, then that would be helpful to be added specificity.
I believe that Fisher actually starts at eight-thirty in the morning, is that correct? Anyone who has children there? Commissioner Seac?
It actually starts before they have zero period, but I'll let you, I'll let staff work that out. My biggest concern is to make sure that the sidewalk, there is no large trucks or traffic that is blocking that, so that it can continue to be used by bicyclists and walkers, both to and from.
Yes, Commissioner Birch?
I guess on that note, although construction is not allowed to start till eight, large trucks usually sit idling. I've seen it on Los Gatos Boulevard, you know, getting ready for the eight o'clock, and I think it can be remedied by a traffic control mitigation plan that you can get from a traffic solutions company that would just provide traffic control for that purpose.
And staff will make sure that our construction management plan includes those provisions.
Yes, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Since I made the motion, I'm gonna put a little more specificity into it and ask the secondor to concur. I would request that the staff determine whether eight a.m. is adequate, notwithstanding whatever the town code is, and that it determine when a similar rush hour of young people would be in the afternoon, and based on that investigation on your part, that there be some traffic control in the afternoon, because certainly my observation that there are ebbs and flows to that kind of traffic, both in the morning and the afternoon. So I'd add that to the motion.
And I would second that.
All right, then I have one other question for staff before we take the vote, and that is, I didn't find it in here, but it might be in the conditions of approval where the supervising foreman, or there's a cellphone number that's posted at the property, so that, we had such neighborhood interest in this, that I just want to make sure the neighbors have a telephone number they can call.
If the motion maker and the secondor are interested, we can add that to the construction program as well.
That a number be posted at the site.
As the maker, I would certainly adopt that.
And the secondor agrees?
Yes, I do.
All right, as the motion has been added to and amended, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
And none opposed? So it passes unanimously? Mr. Paulson, are there appeal rights?
There are appeal rights. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the planning commission can appeal that decision. The decision must be filed within ten days, the forms are available in the clerk's office, and there is a fee for filing the appeal.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. We're now going to move on to Agenda Item Two, which is an appeal of a decision by the Director of Community Development denying a tree removal permit on properties at 205 and 215 West Chester Drive. By a show of hands, may I see the commissioners who have visited the property? And are there any disclosures? Seeing none. Ms. Savage, I understand you're giving us the report this evening.
Yes, good evening, Chair and Commissioners. The applicant requested to remove the subject tree on March, in March 2014. It's a sixty-two-inch diameter sugar pine tree located at 215 West Chester, and it overhangs 205 West Chester. The request was denied because the arborist found that selective pruning could reduce the droppage of foliage and pine cones, causing the damage that the appellant claims that there is. And the appellant did file an appeal on March seventh, or May seventh, pardon me. This, the property owner does believe that it is a public nuisance, the foliage and the pine cone droppage. And this concludes staff presentation, but we are available for any questions.
So just to sort this out, I just want to ask you a question. So the resident at 215 made the original tree removal application, and it was denied.
Correct.
And so they are the appellant. But the, but this evening, the contact person is the resident who, or at least on the agenda, the resident who lives at 205?
Correct. The request, the tree removal permit was filed by the property owner at 215 West Chester at the request of the appellant and property owner at 205.
All right. Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff? Yes, Commissioner Bondami?
This is for the town attorney. So that being said, does the appellant, a neighbor, have standing to appeal a tree removal permit for a tree that's on somebody else's property?
Absolutely, just as if it was granted, and a neighbor, even though it's not on their property, would have the ability to appeal the granting of that.
Thank you. No other questions, Ms. Savage? Now going to open the public portion of the public hearing and give the applicant an opportunity to address the commission. The applicant will have five minutes, and, gentlemen, are you Mr. Roberts or Mr. Fritz?
I'm John Fritz.
All right, so you're going to speak first for, as the appellant?
Right.
All right, thank you.
So my name is John Fritz. I live at 215 West Chester Drive. Last, last, I guess it was December, our neighbors approached us about having the tree removed due to their concerns for safety of pine cones that are dropping into their backyard. So they did express their concern, they did show us a fountain that was broken. Our preference has always been to try to keep the tree, but we definitely want to be able to address their, their safety issues, especially since they have children in the house. So with that, my wife and I proceeded along with the, the application for the tree removal.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the applicant? Commissioner O'Donnell?
You understand that the town is essentially saying that were the tree trimmed adequately, the risk of these pine cones, which I saw the photographs of, and they do look serious, would be controlled. What is your feeling about that?
So this has been a, an exercise in learning all about tree regulations in the city, so we went through the process, and we've been learning along the way. So I'm prepared to, you know, if the tree stays, we're prepared to maintain the tree and be stewards of the tree. If this decision is to remove it, then we'll act accordingly.
My question really is, do you have an opinion as to whether it will be adequate or will be safe if it is trimmed to whatever degree? That's what we're trying to find out.
Yes, I think it could be, I think it could be trimmed to where it was safe, but, you know, that's, it's also up to my neighbor to, to express his, his concerns about the safety. Yeah.
I do have a question for you, and that is, how long have you lived at this residence?
We've been there since 2008.
2008, and how about your neighbor, do you know? He's going to testify, so I'm just asking.
Yeah, they were ahead of us by a couple of years, I believe.
All right, thank you. Now, don't leave yet, all right?
Okay.
Yes, Commissioner Seac?
Specifically with the tree trimming, have you ever trimmed it back twenty-five, I think twenty-five percent, based on what, because it says in your letter that you have trimmed it back, and it wasn't, and it continues to be a danger, but have you actually trimmed it back twenty-five percent?
I wouldn't know the percentage. We did, we did trim it at their request four years ago, I believe.
And at that time, it sounds like it was not adequate?
Apparently not.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no further questions, sir, you can have a seat, and you will have an opportunity to add anything that you might have forgotten, all right?
All right, thank you.
So we'll call you back up. Mr. Roberts?
Hi, I'm Dan Roberts. I live at 205 West Chester Drive. We did have the tree trimmed eighteen months ago, actually, and it was twenty-five percent because the tree trimming company were, were very specific about that, they knew the town The tree permit for the removal of the pine tree at 215 West Chester was denied based on the assumption that selective pruning would limit the amount of foliage and cones dropping, and thereby, that would alleviate the danger the tree represents to both of our families, and this assumption is not correct. As I said, we had the tree trimmed eighteen months ago. It has grown back quite quickly, it's a very healthy tree. We've had three near hits by pine cones, two of them this summer, and the fountain that was damaged by the falling pine cone, I have a photo with my appeal. That, that fountain had only been in our yard for one year, or less than a year. We are basically unable to use our patio or any portion of our property underneath or near the portion of the tree that overhangs. When I submitted my appeal, I attached a photo of pine cones that had dropped between May third and May sixth, and I have continued to save pine cones since that time up until Monday this week, and I've collected a hundred and thirty-two dropped pine cones on our property of the type in that photo. And I have a, I have another picture of the, the new collection. So that's approximately one per day over the course of four months. Assuming that a similar quantity falls on Mr. Fritz's property, that's two hundred and sixty pine cones over four months, roughly seven hundred and fifty to eight hundred pine cones per year. The town code allows for twenty-five percent of the tree canopy to be trimmed. The total canopy of this pine tree that grows in the direction of 205's property is twenty-five feet. Twenty-one feet of that is overhanging our property line. That's more than eighty percent of the total canopy of the tree. Trimming twenty-five percent of this canopy will result in an overhang, a remaining overhang of fifteen feet, which will still overhang our patio and our property, and we will, it will be unsafe for us to allow our children to play in the backyard. As I mentioned previously, we trimmed it eighteen months ago, and it has grown back quite quickly. So the twenty-five percent town code limit, we've already, you know, explored that, and it has not been successful for us. If we were to trim it back fifty percent, we would still have nearly nine feet over our property. Even seventy-five percent, there would still be two feet of tree overhanging our property, and while it would be safe at that point, as far as I'm concerned, it wouldn't be much of a tree. It would certainly be, let me see now, it would, I said, it would detract from the neighborhood rather than enhance it at that point. Is that my time?
That's, your time is up, sir.
Ah, okay.
All right. But stay right there, and let's see about some questions.
Okay.
Commissioner Seac?
Okay, so thanks for that information. I just want to make sure I understand the process.
Okay.
So you saw the tree arborist's recommendation for trimming it back. Have you had any conversations with the tree arborist to say you've done it and it hasn't worked?
When he came to make his inspection, I was, I was present, and I did tell him that at the time, that we, at that point, we had already had it trimmed, and so when he saw it, it's in the state that it is today, because that was eighteen, eighteen months previous. Does that answer the question?
It does, but there was no, there was no comment, may...
By the arborist?
Correct. About a second alternative, or?
No.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Then I do have a few questions, and that is, how long have you lived at this residence?
We've lived there since May 2005.
And so the tree was there when you got there?
Yep.
And where were the pine cones?
Oh, they were there.
Okay, so you were aware of that.
So the previous resident was an elderly woman and of small means, and we didn't want to, it's also, it has taken us quite some time to build up the confidence to deal with this conflict with a neighbor. It's not an easy thing to ask, to have a large tree, you know, removed out of your neighbor's yard. But we, you know, over time, when we have seen, you know, pine cone after pine cone crack on our patio, you know, damage our fountain, we've had some pottery broke thirty feet easily away from the tree, you know, as they bounce across our patio. It just, it's just, it just reached a point where it became more and more and more of a concern and a fear for us. We're afraid to walk across our backyard.
How large is your backyard?
Hmm.
I, I could only see the homes from the sidewalk today and the tree, so I just...
I would say maybe from the, from the house, from the structure to the back fence, maybe forty feet from, and the tree does reach to the corner of the house, so...
All right, and what do you think is the average weight of a pine cone? Of that pine cone?
I have some with me.
Pardon me?
I have some with me.
Ounces?
What's that?
Ounces? Pounds? I just wondered...
Eight to ten ounces, maybe?
I just saw your picture, and I was just thinking.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I do, I can show you if you want to see what they look like in person.
That's all right. All right. Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Birch?
I just want to clarify, in the tree removal agreement, that it looks like you have both signed.
Yep.
That in that agreement, should the tree be removed, that once you both have agreed upon the responsible low bidder, that you are currently looking at paying seventy-five percent of the tree removal cost?
That's true, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Bondami?
When you purchased the property, apparently in May of 2005, did you consider the risk of living in such close proximity to a pine tree?
No. I was not aware of the danger of the tree at the time that we purchased the property, no.
Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner O'Donnell, did you have your hand up?
I did, but I'll pass.
But you don't. Okay, all right. Thank you, sir. You can have a seat. If the applicant has anything that he would like to, or the appellant would like to add... If the applicant has anything that he would like to, or the appellant would like to add, sir, you're, you're welcome to make any more comments, or not. It's up to you.
I don't believe I can do that.
All right, thank you. So we're now going to, we have no, no further testimony on this, so we're going to close the public portion of the public hearing. And commissioners, do we have any comments? Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'm a little concerned in the sense that I heard two questions concerning essentially assumption of risk type things. Did you know the pine tree was there when you bought the house? When in fact, what is before us is if the town prohibits someone from taking down a tree, notwithstanding danger, how does that release the town? I mean, to me, to say, did you assume the risk because you moved in and there was a pine tree there, and that will discharge us from our liability in interpreting. The rulings, I understand it, is either the tree is unhealthy, which it is not, or there is a substantial danger to residents, which we've, the only testimony we've heard is that, one, yes, there is substantial damage, two, a fountain, which is, I think, made out of concrete, was broken. It seems to me that if we were to say, you've assumed the risk, and something falls on one of his guests or one of his children, that would be very unfortunate. So I just, I'm concerned that we should not be looking at assumption of risk.
And this is a recurring theme, so perhaps would the town attorney like to address the question?
Absolutely. Assumption of risk shouldn't, should not be in, in your decision making. The code explains exactly on the reasons why, and you need to make those findings if you want it removed, but the actual assumption of risk is not part of the equation.
Thank you. Commissioner Bandami?
I'm having trouble finding this as defined as a public nuisance under the town code definition. It seems to me that we're talking about private property. There's no public access, so I would have trouble defining it as a, as a public nuisance. I, I'm sure it's a private nuisance and very annoying, but under the definition that's given to us under the town code, I would have difficulty finding it as a public nuisance.
Can I speak to that real briefly?
Sir, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I've closed that portion of the public hearing. Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'll look to the town attorney, but if this were a prob, a problem with the property owner only, I would not have a problem with the private nuisance theory. But this is a problem with an adjoining property, which means that somebody besides the private property owner is involved. At what point does it leave being a private nuisance to become a public nuisance? And I can remember the statute defining a public nuisance, but I don't recall exactly the distinction. I mean, roughly, but I don't, this is a fine distinction which I'm not sure I can apply here.
I can look up our definition of public nuisance. I'm usually as a, a neighborhood, or there's a, a higher standard than, than one in the public nuisance if it's defined in that. If you've got it there, I'll take a look at it, or you can say what it is.
Would you like me to read it?
No, I mean, you were saying you having a tough time finding it.
Oh, no, I found it. I very easily found it, but I was having a.
But you couldn't make the findings for the public nuisance, and Commissioner O'Donnell has, has asked exactly what that definition of public nuisance is, so, I mean, you've got it right there for his.
Well, a public nuisance is defined in the state law, whatever that says.
Ours is a little different. Ours, I believe, specifically says.
That may be, but I have no reason to believe that the state law does not control.
Commissioner Seack?
For my own information, can you please read the definition?
Section 29.10.0955. Public nuisance means any trees, shrubs, plants, or parts thereof growing in or overhanging a public street or right-of-way or upon private property interfering with the use of any public street or public place in the town, or trees which in the opinion of the director endanger the life, health, safety, comfort, or property of any persons using such public street or in such public place because of the trees or shrubs location, condition of its limbs, roots, or trunk, or because of its disease condition is hereby declared to be a public nuisance.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Apparently under that interpretation, if a tree is causing imminent danger to a neighbor, we are prohibited from taking the tree down under that definition. So again, I guess the, the question I have is, since the state law is different than that statute, I, I can't believe that the city could say, we're sorry about your kids, hope they live, but they're not on a public street. It doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but if somebody wants to really be religious about the application of that statute, that's their issue.
All right, Commissioner Seack?
Okay, I'm looking to the town attorney if, at this time, given this definition, given the application that's before us, and given the testimony that the recommendation from the arborist has been met but was not to their satisfaction, can there be a legal finding to say that, should we want to, to overturn the appeal? Or based on this definition, are we now saying that there is nothing further we can do? I just need some legal guidance.
Certainly, you could still make the findings that there would be immediate danger to the public, which is even though you, it's on private property, you're still a member of the public. So you could still make that definition and, and make it under, even under state law, you could make it as a public nuisance if you find that there's imminent danger. And I can obtain the state law for public nuisance also.
Thank you. Well, let me make some of my own comments here then, if I might, and I'm looking toward my commissioners to either comment or prepare a motion. I find that we go to great lengths in Los Gatos to protect our trees, and we want to think of all of them as magnificent trees. And when I stood at the property today and looked at that tree, I was just stunned by its beauty. And I thought about the pine cones, and I thought about squirrels knocking those pine cones down. And I really have struggled with this decision. What I don't see in here is the, a trimming that took place 18 months ago. That's a piece of new information to me, but I have no confirmation from the arborist who did that trimming, what he or she or it, the company, found during that trimming. I know that the town arborist suggested an additional trimming, and that has not yet been done, and I understand from the applicant or the appellant why it wasn't done, because they felt they had already done it 18 months before. But I would say our town arborist saw, saw an opportunity for further trimming to perhaps minimize the problem. So given that thought process of mine and our, preserving our treasures in our urban forests here in Los Gatos, I would, I would recommend that the appeal be denied. So that would be where my sense is at this time, and I look forward to hearing from my other commissioners, who are usually so forthcoming with their comments. So can I just encourage you to speak to the issue? Commissioner Birch?
So I was looking in Exhibit 2, Standards of Review, and the required standards of review for a tree removal application, and going through the items that we are supposed to consider in this instance where we are looking at removing a tree. And where, obviously, the conditions go through items like disease, danger of falling and structural failure, and a few things like that, which unfortunately, we don't have. I think that having had a report from an arborist who has recently done the 25% would have been very helpful, because then we could prove that the recommendation for the property has already been met and did not alleviate the problem. But unfortunately, without having that, I can't say that we've already met the arborist's recommendations, so I'm going to have to support a motion of denial.
Any other comments? Commissioner O'Donnell?
The only testimony we have is that indeed it was trimmed to 25%, and it didn't work. There is nothing in the report we have before us that acknowledges that. Notwithstanding, the testimony was that this person told our arborist of that. That is not reported. There is no report that the 25% was accomplished, subsequent to which these things keep falling. So I don't think there's any requirement that we use a written report, because the only evidence we have is of the danger present. So if you want to decide that we can't overturn the appeal, I can understand that. But I wouldn't do it on the basis that you think if we had a written report saying essentially what the applicant said, it would somehow be better than oral testimony. That's all.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Bandami?
I would be leaning towards a denial. I think when you live with trees, you take on a certain amount of risk, and you purchased the land knowing that the tree was there. I'm also concerned about the definition of what I find a public nuisance to be versus a private nuisance, and I'd like to see that tree trimmed back the 25%. I, I sympathize with the dropped pine cones. Some people find them to be treasures, but borrowing the phrase from another commissioner, I feel that we would be opening the floodgates for anybody that's got a pine tree that doesn't like the dropped pine cones.
Commissioner Seack?
Okay, I'll take a, a different approach in that. Based on what we have before us, we have a tree arborist with a very specific recommendation, trim it down to 25%. We have testimony that it has been happened, but that, let me explain what I'd like. What I'd like is an opportunity for the applicant and appellant to talk with the tree arborist and say, we've done this 25%. Is there another alternative? That's actually what I think what would be more useful now. I understand the concerns that within our current tree ordinance, there's nothing that talks about the danger, and it's more with disease. That's one item that I would ask staff to relay to cancel, because I know they're looking at a future tree ordinance revision. But given what's actually before us that we must make a decision on, I do agree that until I hear an alternative by the tree arborist, I don't feel like I can overturn the appeal. That being said, I'd like to actually continue the matter to see if the appellant and applicant can meet with the arborist to see if there's another alternative they could come up with short of a denial or, or of this appeal.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I think that's a good idea. Number one, the Civil Code section that I was thinking of is 3479 to 86. It would be, give the attorney a chance to look at it and see whether it's applicable or not. It might be enlightening to all of us who only have the town code. And if the evidence is strong enough that notwithstanding the pruning, this risk occurs, and we also follow the instructions of our attorney that you can't use assumption of risk, which I just heard again, it would be helpful. So I think continuing to allow that to happen would be, would be helpful.
So I have a question of staff, if I could. The required canopy replacement, if 75% of the canopy is on the neighbor's yard, so the trunk is in one yard and the canopy's on the other, when we require the canopy replacement, we're requiring it of the property owner that has the tree in its backyard, but the canopy is on the neighbor's tree. So what, what would be replanted to replace the 25, I mean, the 75% that's on the neighbor's yard?
The canopy replacement is based on the canopy of the entire tree, regardless of whose property it is spanning.
So that would require the property owner with the trunk on its land to come up with a large enough tree to replace all of that canopy, or trees?
It would be to replace it either on their site. There have been instances where we have allowed neighboring property owners to plant trees on adjacent sites as well. So they wouldn't necessarily all have to be planted on the applicant's property who has the trunk of the tree.
All right, that's what I wanted to clarify. Commissioner Erickson, you wanted to make a comment?
So notwithstanding the debate between my friends and colleagues who are attorneys and not attorneys about what a public nuisance is and so forth, it's really a question for the staff to be sure I'm clear, I understand something, and what constraints we have with taking an action. My reading of the applicable part of Section 2910.090 about falling and failure and public nuisance have to do with the tree itself. Falling or being diseased or creating a public nuisance, whatever a public nuisance is, not with cones or other, falling from the tree causing that. Is that correct? So I believe that the, the language of the, of the applicable ordinance is about the tree itself. So we would have to find that the tree itself was creating a danger. Not, I'm not debating whether or not the cones themselves create the danger. I'm talking about what the ordinance actually says.
I wonder if a limb is part of the tree, and if a limb falls on somebody, is that not the tree? And if a pine cone falls on somebody, is that not the tree?
I was just trying to understand if I was understanding what, what it says, if it was requiring the tree itself.
So Commissioner O'Donnell, we're going to let the staff answer the question. Thank you.
I think it's up to interpretation, as Commissioner O'Donnell offers, you know, whether it's a limb or whether it's a pine cone that is a fundamental part of the tree. I think that that interpretation could be made by the commission, but I would look to see if the town attorney has any additional input on that.
It's, it's subject to interpretation, and I'm reviewing the sections right now under, you know, the different criteria that allow for it, and really, there's more than just the one dealing with the public nuisance. There's other criterias that it could fall under also, so it's, it's, it's not an all or nothing analysis that you make.
What I'm wondering then, commissioners, if Commissioner Seack in particular would like to make a motion to continue the matter, to give all of these points of view, the staff an opportunity to bring some clarity to these issues. But before I do that, Commissioner Birch, I think you had your hand up, and I maybe had missed it.
I was actually going to say that I felt Commissioner Seack would come up with a nice compromise, and perhaps we should move in that direction.
Thank you. Great minds think alike. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to continue the matter to a date certain. I'll let staff give us what that date is. And there are two specific areas that we need further information on. The first is the, a meeting between the tree arborist and applicant and appellant, understanding that, well, first, the recommendation was to cut it back by 25%. And I'd like to have our tree arborist look at what the applicant has already done, understand his concerns, and see if there is an alternate suggestion that could be made. And then the second is the legal interpretation based on public nuisance that's before the town code. What exactly are we allowed to do based on pine cone droppings versus actual tree health? And I think we need further legal definition on that, so.
And Commissioner O'Donnell is seconding it. Is there any further comments? Seeing none, let's take a vote on the motion to continue. All in favor? Aye. None opposed? So Mr. Paulson, you're going to give the applicant and appellant a date certain for continuation?
We would look to September 24th as the continuation date, and should the information not be able to be attained by then, then we would continue it. Otherwise, we'll bring it back at that date.
And you, you will be working with the appellant and the applicant so that this, there's a meeting of the minds about the, meeting with the arborist? I mean, I'm, I'm trying to figure out how we enforce that.
Staff will make sure that that happens, and we have both the town arborist, and we also have the outside consulting arborist. And so we will work with PPW staff to determine what the best course of action would be for that.
All right, and just want to make sure that the applicant and the appellant understand that that's what we're agreeing to this evening. All right, thank you. Then that matter is, Mr. Paulson, I think we've taken the next steps. Are there any other steps that either one would be entitled to, besides the continuance?
No, there's not.
All right, thank you. So we're going to end that matter, and we will move right on to Agenda Item Number Three, which is an appeal of a decision by the Director of Community Development denying a tree removal permit on property at 16570 Garden Lane. By a show of hands, may I see from? By a show of hands, may I see from the commissioners who have visited the property? And are there any disclosures? Seeing none, Ms. Savage, I understand you're going to also give this report.
Yes. Thank you. The applicant... The appellate has requested the removal of six trees in total. Five have been approved for removal. The subject tree this evening is the sixth tree, and it is a 28-inch diameter cedar tree. The town parks department did receive the request on June 26th of this year for that removal of the sixth tree. It was in good health and the appeal was denied and then appealed on... I'm sorry, the permit was... The tree removal permit request was denied and then appealed on July 7th. There does appear to be some space on the property that the addition that the applicant is planning to apply for permits for could be built. So elsewhere on the site, there's an alternative location for an addition. The tree was originally requested to be removed in order to construct a future addition. The town's consulting arborist did provide recommended setbacks from the subject tree in order to save that tree. And it appears that in addition to there being space elsewhere on the property, the addition could meet those setbacks recommended by the town's consulting arborist. There is a desk item this evening. A neighbor, the neighbor immediately to the southwest of the subject property, did send an email by way of his son, and he could not be here in attendance tonight, but he did just want to make some comment on the request to deny the request to appeal the denial. This concludes staff presentation, and the staff is available for any questions.
Ms. Savage, if you could give us just a moment to read this item and just stay right where you are because it, whether it poses any questions or not, I don't know. But I think we should read it before we have you sit down.
Thank you.
Let me know when you're all set. Commissioner Erickson, how are you doing? Okay. All right. So now Ms. Savage. Are there any questions for Ms. Savage this evening so far? All right. Seeing none. Now going to open the public portion of the public hearing, and I am going to call the applicant, Mr. Ratson.
My name is Rafit. My husband is Ghee, and we're family. We have three kids. Do you listen?
You know what I'd like you to do is pull the microphone to you.
Okay.
There you go. And then start again and tell us your name.
Okay. So first, thank you for the commission and for the people that came to support us, the architects and our arborist. So my name is Rafit. My husband is Ghee, and we have three kids, two and a half years old, Libby, seven years old, Gurd at Ghost of a Meter, and Goni, which is here, came to support us too. So this is our first house. We worked very hard to buy this house, this property. And we basically, the reason we bought this house, we fell in love with all the beautiful trees that are on these properties. Currently, there are 14 very big trees on these properties. It's beautiful. It's enchanted. When we bought it, and as our kids call it, we live in the mini forest. My husband grew up in a farm. We very connected to the nature. We hike, we camp. We love this property, and that's why we bought it. When we bought it, we knew that the house is very small and will not fit a family of five needs. We have only two bedrooms, one bath, no family room, very small. But we didn't have any concern about increasing the size of the structure because after all, we live on 16,000 square feet lot. So it's a very big lot. However, once we start to work with our architect and understand the constraints, we find out that this property was built very close to the setback. So it remain... We have only 10 feet that we can build on in the back. We have to keep 20 feet for the setback. On the... We have to provide, because there is another unit which has separate address, we have to provide four parking garage for the... In total, and we don't have enough space for four parking garage in the front. So actually, it also takes part of the space, and we have to provide a driveway. So this already also take big chunk of the property. And of course, we try to... We want to preserve the beauty, and there is all the drip line of all the trees. So we are ending up very limited in how much we can extend. So... Second... Yeah. So I think I cover most of the items I wanted to. Oh, and yeah, I want to just clarify about the five trees that we have to remove because it... So two of them were dead, and that's why we submit first time. And then the arborist of the city came to visit the site, and he told us to remove three more that are sick. That's why we removed the five trees. It's not because we, you know, it's... Two of them were dead and it was a hazard issue, and then three of them we were being asked to remove. Now, because we are now in a planning, and we do have a site, you know, like a future plan for the garden and more tweet to add, but we know that we will not be able to finish all these plans within 60 days. And we didn't want to break the law of not planting as a replacement. The arborist suggested us to pay $600 to the city for other trees to replace. However, we are going to, as part of our plan, we are going to provide for the other unit green space, and we plan to plant at least 10... Eight to 10 trees in our... To add on top of what we already have, which are currently, we have 14 trees. So on top of it, we are going to add trees. And that's it.
All right. Don't leave yet because we might have some questions for you, all right? Do we have any questions of the applicant? Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you for your presentation. I missed your discussion of the other unit. Would you clarify that?
Yeah. So part of the... In this 16... I think the architect will explain this better. But there is a unit in... Within this... Within our lot. So there is a unit also.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I do have a question. I just want to ask you something. I know that you said the other trees were dead. On the application received July 7th, it says that one tree is dead, the redwood number one.
And then sick. The other one is diseased.
Yes. And then it also says that it's another one, which is pine number two, would be removed to give garage space, and then a redwood number three would be removed in order to add living space. Down at the bottom, I noticed that it says the two redwoods are dead, and the pine has multiple tops. I just see two different explanations, and it's fine. I just wanted to ask you the question about the application.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
And even they were... Will we not provide extra space? It's because of just the... The trees were not... Not in...
I think your microphone maybe is not on. Here we go. We have someone's going to fix that for us. Going to give you a quick replacement. We want to make sure we can hear you. There we go.
Okay. So the reason they were removed again is because of the condition of the tree, not because of space.
All right. And then you already know which... Where you're going to plant new trees? I just want to...
So we want to plant it on the majority of them on the back, on the setback, where the wall is. Well, in the...
So they would be in the back of the property?
Yeah. Yeah. We already, in the front of the property, already have, I think, 10. I don't know whoever visited, if you've visited.
Yeah, we all visited, yes.
Okay. So you saw probably how many trees we have already in the front. We may use it also on the side, you know, just to provide more privacy. So, you know, we believe that trees are better than walls because right now we have very big wall, you know, in the back. And we really believe in green and, you know, and keep the feeling, the beauty of the...
Then if I could ask you one additional question. Have you given some thought to building around this tree?
Yeah. So I think that we brought with us an arborist, and our arborist and...
All right. And they're going to give us testimony as well?
Yeah.
All right. Okay. Are there any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, you can have a seat, but just know that we'll call you back up. So if you think of anything while we're talking, you're going to have an opportunity to come back up and talk to us, all right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have both Mr. Barton and Mr. Levy, and I'm not sure who's going to speak first.
My name is Amnon Levy. I am the architect.
I need for you to pull that microphone up to you. There we go. And let's make sure that we can hear you.
Is it better?
Yes. Perfect. And you are, sir?
My name is Amnon Levy. I am the architect for the project, and I want to make some clarification. This is very challenging lot, as big as it is. You can see, I don't know if you can see enough. This is the main house, existing house. This is a unit, which has been approved as a unit. It has a second address by now. This is the tree that we're talking about, and this is the design that... The reason for removing the tree, the application.
Will that fit on the projector? Excuse me one second. Ms. Savage, would that fit on the projector or not? I don't think so, but let me see. No. Well, let's see. Can you minimize it down? No, I don't think so. All right.
It's okay. We can move it.
Yeah. No. It's... Let's see. Is that better? Okay. All right. Let's take a look at it that way.
On the right side, you can see the long driveway with...
There we go.
On the right side, you can see the long driveway that going... Leading to four parking places that are required. So all this area of the lot is unavailable for construction. Behind the house, we have very limited, about 10 feet. It's very limited for construction. The purpose, and Rafit didn't mention it, the purpose of the addition is to have another two bedrooms, a small office. They are true... They have chose the front because the front is so nice. It's like the green core of the lot, and it's the best place to enjoy and to use for this sleeping wing. Now, you can see the seven feet that we cannot build closer to the tree when we built on one side. So this is an alternative location on the same spot of the lot. But you can see that we are getting close to the unit and creating like a corridor here, which is very unfortunate and very attractive from the main house. This is going to be their house. You're going to see kind of a narrow corridor, and that side would be a little bit wider, but it would be hard to use. In other words, this nice area would be cut into slices instead of having a nice patio that can be utilized by the family. So it's... It looks to me that there is not too much alternative to do the same volume of addition. This is about 830. This is only 610. So not removing the tree would cause much smaller addition.
Mr. Levy, can I ask you, where is this four-car garage going?
This is one.
But can you just point for me? Okay.
So these are the four parking spots.
At the end of the driveway or that winding road back?
Yeah.
All right.
So there is a backup area. So it takes a lot of space of the backyard. Another thing that we need to... This is all commercial area. So it has to be screened, but it's not... Doesn't have the same value as a front.
All right. So let me tell you that your time is up, so you need to stop. But that doesn't mean don't go away because we may have some more questions for you. Any other questions? Commissioner Birch?
I don't think that we would ask this question very often, but I'm very familiar with this site and the constraints for constructability on it. So actually, I would have two questions, if that's okay. Did you explore going up?
It's always a possibility. I cannot deny it. But it's much more expensive. It's an old house.
Yes.
It's actually meaning rebuilt house at all. And you know all the regulation for a new house. So I don't think it's possible, but it's up to my client to...
Of course. I just wanted to know. And my second question that would go along the same thought process is, is there a need to keep the second unit as a second unit? Was that ever looked at to be incorporated into the house as more living space?
I think it's an economical question.
Right. Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Birch. Commissioner O'Donnell?
I don't know if you heard the staff's report earlier, and staff reported that the evidence they had was that you could build a house or the addition to the house and still allow the cedar, I understand it to be a cedar, enough space to survive. I'm hearing from you at the moment, maybe that's not your position. Is it your position that you could not build the addition you wish in its proximity to the cedar?
Correct.
How close would it be to the cedar?
Well, the limitation is seven feet if the addition... If the construction is on one side, and 12 feet if the construction is on more than one side. So you can see we have another redwood at the top here. That's a redwood. So building around the tree is almost impossible to make a kind of contingent structure. So that's why I think that's only... This is only a possible addition at the same place.
And you're telling us you wouldn't move it to what is it, the right on this drawing? Because the passage between that new structure and the existing structure is, in your judgment, too narrow?
I think it's... Well, depends what you call too narrow. When you stand here in the kitchen, this is the kitchen here. This is your... This is a view from the kitchen. Right now, without this, this is a nice view of a green patio with all the trees. To this corridor, I call something that doesn't weigh us too much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, sir, you can have a seat, and we now will call Mr. Barton. And identify yourself. Pull that microphone close to your mouth. There you go.
There we go. Hi, my name is Mark Barton. I've been a certified arborist.
I've been a certified arborist for sixteen years. I'm the person who wrote the report for the Ruttens. I have to compliment the commission. I have been sitting through meetings for many, many, many years. Lots of boards, lots of commissions. You folks have had one of the most thoughtful sets of conversations about trees I've ever heard. I just have to say that. It's very nice to see, it's refreshing, even if things don't go my way tonight, so. So where I'd like to start, if I could, is the outcome of the request to have tree removals done. And when I read the consulting arborist's report, as well as staff's report, what I got from it was, these were bad people. They were bad people because they removed five trees, and they didn't pay, or they didn't plant three new ones. They paid their fine. What I see is new homeowners who are trying to follow the rules. And in my business, trying to get people to follow the regs is what we're all about. And so I kind of don't know why they're being demonized in the reports, and I've read both of them several times. And the tone I get is that they did something wrong by removing those trees, asking for the permits twice, their ignorance being twice. I said, if you've known to do it once, it would have looked a lot different, but they didn't. So let's dismiss the evilness of people following the rules because they didn't do anything wrong. As a matter of fact, they were acting on the recommendations of city staff. Rob Molden and I had a long conversation about this. That's how we got to the cedar tree. Rob and I have spoken about this cedar tree at length. Rob doesn't have any problem with this tree coming out. He knows why, because it won't affect the property in a significant way. Interestingly enough, when you get into it, the report finds the tree in good to excellent health and states that should the cedar tree be removed, the site would continue to have several mature trees, including eight of equivalent size. That's my report. This is a consulting arborist. The consulting arborist says, found the tree to have good vigor and fair good structure, which results in good preservation suitability rating. The consulting arborist concurs with the property owner's arborist that if all other trees remained on the property, the removal of the subject cedar would not have much of an effect on the overall canopy coverage. Staff denied it because they felt that there was adequate space. Now, where I'd like to go from here rather quickly is the standards of review. And if you go to items one and five, they are inapplicable. If you go to items two, three, and four, which I don't have time, I see, to go over six and eight, this tree, this tree should be removed. And number six says, if it reduces the buildable space by twenty-five percent, and it does, then the tree should be removed. Thank you.
Okay, now don't leave in case we have any questions for you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Would you tell me the basis upon which you believe it reduces it by that percentage?
I'm at the architect, had done the calculations-
But you just gave us your opinion, I wonder what your opinion is based on?
On the square footage numbers that were given to me by the architect.
So you have no independent knowledge that it would in fact affect to that degree?
Everything that I know is what you see here. I'm not an architect. And so if you're asking me, what I can tell you about architectural reviews is I've seen a lot of them. And one tree out of fourteen is absolutely nominal tree removal for development of any sort.
You remember Joyce Kilmer, I suppose? A tree is important to us. And if you have some reason to believe that we are permitted to have it removed, I'm looking for that. And I think you've told me, whatever I learn from the architect is what I should look to.
What I'm telling you is that this tree, we can have a conversation, as we do in my industry all the time, about the value of a living thing. But under the code, as I see it, if in fact you all concur that this reduces the buildability or the additions capability by twenty-five percent, as I read the code, item number six says the tree should be removed. If that's in fact the case, I'm not saying it is. I'm suggesting that, from what I understand at this point, it appears it could be.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Barton? Seeing none, thank you, sir. And now if the applicant has anything that you would like to add, please feel free to step forward. Do you wish to add anything? No, all right. So then that's going to close the public portion of the public hearing. And I'm now going to invite my fellow commissioners to make comments, recommendations, invite a motion. Commissioner Seack?
I have more questions for staff, I just want to make sure I understand the process. We actually don't have an application before us, correct? In terms of a building? We're not looking at construction plans and-
Correct, you are not.
It's strictly, okay. So the question, what I'm grappling with is strictly on the tree removal. And first, let me begin statements with, in no way, in any shape or form, do I feel that there's any demonizing going on. So I just want to make that clear for the record. I just want to understand the process. There's been an application to remove a tree. The reason for a potential build-out. We don't have those plans, and staff that does have the plans has a difference of opinion in that they feel there's enough. So it's hard for me to actually determine whether there is enough when I don't have plans to actually look at in comparison to the tree. Now, is there, I just need to know the process. Is there some way to look at it together? Or are we first determining, basically similar to Hillside's, what the LRDA is based on what trees are there?
What I would offer is the plans that you do have in your package are the proposed construction and addition. Those plans would only require a building permit, they would not come before the planning commission. So that is one of the basis for them intending to remove the tree. Tonight, you really are looking at, do you feel that the tree appeal should be granted or not? You can take that in light of what they're proposing, and the testimony obviously you heard tonight about how the proposed configuration from the architect is a better configuration than one that would save the tree, i.e. keeping it seven feet from that tree that they're proposing to remove, or any of the other information that you've heard this evening.
Okay, thank you.
I also have a question, but I'm not, I think it has to be directed toward Ms. Savage. And Ms. Savage, can you walk me through this two-unit requirement? That we heard from the applicant that they are required, because it's two parcels, I believe she said. But in any case, taking it from a layman to the technicalities of it, could you walk us through that?
Sure, there are two existing units on the property. It's considered a single-family dwelling with a second unit. If they were to remove the use of the second unit, it would require an architecture and site application to come before you, the planning commission, in order to remove that second unit. There are two parking spaces required for the single-family dwelling and two parking spaces required for the detached secondary dwelling unit.
And can you give me the approximate size again of that secondary unit? I think it was eight hundred and sixty square feet, but that's- Okay, all right. Commissioner O'Donnell, while Ms. Savage is looking that up, do you have a question for Ms. Savage as well?
Uh, no, this is not for Ms. Savage, but she may be, maybe-
Can you turn your microphone on, please?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I always forget. Thank you. Six says the retention of a protected tree would result in the reduction of the otherwise permissible building envelope by more than twenty-five percent. So the question in my mind is, what does it mean to be the otherwise permissible building envelope? I don't take that to mean you get to pick where you want to put your house, and that defines the building envelope, but I'm asking that question.
The building envelope is defined by the required setbacks. So that defines your building envelope.
So anywhere within that area is a building envelope?
Correct, and if you look at sheet one of the plans, there's a dash line which shows the twenty-foot rear setback, the eight-foot side setbacks and the twenty-five-foot front. So that is the origin of item six.
Okay, thanks very much.
Ms. Savage, did you want to give me that number?
Yes, and pardon me while I go to a different microphone. The existing second unit is just, it's under six hundred square feet. There is a workshop that is nearby that's about two hundred square feet. And the plan, as shown on exhibit ten, is to attach both the workshop and the existing second unit, which would result in approximately eight hundred square feet.
And the, maintaining the second unit means to be maintaining it as a dwelling unit? I was just thinking about adding, I'm just trying to figure out if we're adding, if we're adding more problems by saying that the second unit has to stay within this design? And we don't even have the design in front of us. So I'm just struggling to try and figure out the layout of this home and this tree.
The property owner does have the right to apply for an architecture and site application to remove the second unit, and it would be up to the planning commission to grant that request.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
A follow-up on that question. I have assumed the reason it would require that, to remove that, may have to do with the housing element. In other words, we're concerned with the housing in town, i.e. rental housing, single-family housing, et cetera, et cetera. Were this removed from the rental market, I guess, is that required, is that part of the reason we require another step?
It is, and that is one of the findings that the planning commission would have to make if a request to remove a second unit was brought before you, that of which it complies with the housing element of the general plan.
All right, are there any other questions of staff? Any commissioner wish to make any comments? Commissioner Bandami?
I just want to follow up on Commissioner Seack in that I'd like to thank staff for the thoroughness of their report. I didn't pick up on any badness directed towards the applicant, and that concerns me, that you would feel that way.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'll make a motion if you're prepared to entertain motions yet?
I am prepared to entertain motions.
Thank you. I would move that we deny the appeal. Thank you. I would move that we deny the appeal. The findings would be made pursuant to exhibit two. Let's see, what else do I need? And further on the basis that there is no, none of the reasons which are set forth, which we've gone over, reasons one through eight, really fit. The reason asserted by the applicant of the twenty-five percent rule clearly doesn't apply. So there appears to be no reason which is set forth in our law that we could reverse the decision of the staff. So I would move that we sustain that decision.
Thank you, is there a second? Commissioner Bandami?
I'll second the motion.
All right. So in consideration, let me make some comments, and that is that it would be my intent to support the motion to deny the appeal. And what I do want to state however is that this is a beautiful piece of property, and I do know that the applicant feels that and knows that. There's many opportunities on that property. When I looked at it today, I just stood there really amazed by it. I never even knew that property existed, even though I've taken very small grandchildren to the little park that's right around the corner from it. So I know that you're very fortunate, I know you respect the land. And I do know that there's also a design that can incorporate this particular tree and also make your family very happy. So I am going to just know that I will be supporting the motion. Any other comments from any other commissioners? Seeing none, let's call the vote, all in favor? Aye. Passes unanimously. Mr. Paulson, what are the rights here?
There are appeal rights. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the planning commission can file an appeal to the town council. The forms are available in the clerk's office. The appeal must be filed within ten days, and there is a fee for filing the appeal.
All right, thank you. We're now going to move on to agenda item number four, which is requesting approval to modify an existing plan development, to modify the requirement for exterior colors on the plan development known as Highland Oaks, that address is listed on the agenda. Shady Lane, Santella Court, Gumtree Lane, and Santella Drive. Plan development application, PD fourteen dash zero zero three, by a show of hands. May I see the commissioners who've visited the property? We all have. Any disclosures? Seeing none, Mr. Paulson, I understand you're going to lead us through the staff report tonight.
Yes, thank you. This subdivision is known as the Highlands of Los Gatos. The plan development for this site was approved by the town council in late 2005 for the subdivision of approximately sixty-six acres into nineteen lots. Fourteen of those lots have been approved. In 2011, Davidon Homes purchased the property and has been taking action to complete architecture and site applications. And thus far, fourteen have been approved. Two have been approved by the town, or by the planning commission, and twelve have been approved by the DRC. In the plan development ordinance, as is typical of plan development ordinances in the hillside, as well as the subsequent architecture and site applications, there is a condition in each of those that requires the light reflective value of the homes be thirty or less. The applicant tonight is requesting consideration of modification of that PD, which would allow an alternative method of one or more alternatives to complying with the LRV. There's eight lots that they propose to comply with the LRV. Three of the lots, they are proposing an averaging option, which averages all of the materials of the facades, not just the paint color, which is typical of what staff looks at when we're looking at light reflective value. And the last would be, eight of the lots, given their architectural style and traditional colors relating to that architectural style, that they not be required to comply with the LRV. The applicant has provided a number of exhibits detailing, as you can see behind you, and is also in your packets, exhibits showing the original colors that are proposed, or were proposed for the lots. A compliant color in the middle, and then the LRV averaging option at the bottom. They've also provided additional justification, and they'll speak further about that in their presentation this evening. While staff understands that this isn't, most of these properties aren't visible from anywhere, except for off-site and in the immediate vicinity. Given the requirement in Hillside Development Standards and Guidelines that the LRV be thirty or less, staff cannot support the proposal, and therefore that's the reason for staff's recommendation in the staff report. However, should the commission feel that there is merit for one or more of the proposed alternative methods, then that's something that can be forwarded to the town council that would require modification of the performance standard in the plan development ordinance to reflect whatever the commission's direction would be to that effect. And that concludes staff's report, and we're here to answer any questions.
Thank you, are there any questions of staff? Yes, Commissioner Seack?
Thank you, I have two questions. At the time, this plan development was under discussion. Just a historical review, if you could. Was there any part of that discussion on colors? I understand it's a Hillside guideline, but as part of the plan development, was there any, or a few minutes? How much discussion was there on color?
I'll be honest, I did not go back and review all of the minutes from the planning commission in 2005, and then the council as well. Color generally isn't a topic because the new Hillside Development Standards and Guidelines and prior Hillside Development Standards and Guidelines always had this LRV requirement. I think, again, as the applicant presents, as they've looked at it, given its location and the nature of the homes in trying to create, you know, truly a custom track where houses have a lot of differentiation, once you start looking at that color palette, it makes it challenging from a visual or aesthetic perspective. But color, I'm sure, I should not say I'm sure, color, I do not recall being a significant conversation during that plan development.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Bandami?
Is there record of projects in the hillsides that have sought or been allowed an LRV exception in the past, to your knowledge?
This is the first request. What I will state is that there are a number of houses in the hillside that were built prior to the requirements for LRV. So there are a number of houses in the hillside that do not currently have the deed restriction requiring them to meet the LRV of 30. But as houses turn over or are redone, then that requirement is placed on those.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I've been on the commission for 10 years, plus or minus, and I was trying to think of any other similar situation where you had this many homes seeking anything. So to the question just asked, I think we've tended to apply it on an individual basis. There may indeed have been situations where we had multiple homes, but to my recollection, this is probably the largest application at any one given time to a project. And as we recall, the original developer of this project sold the project subsequently. So I guess I'm wondering, do you have any recollection of as broad an application of this at any one given time?
There really probably would only be two. The first would be the Greenbrier project at the corner of Shannon and Hicks. They're close to the church there. And the second would be on Blossom Hill, the heritage is that I believe Summerhill did there. So those are the only two that have similar size, and the Summerhill actually has more homes in that. And I'll double-check the Summerhill. I can't remember the zoning of that one, but it's definitely has some hillside portions up in the hill that were dedicated as open space.
Were those—I'm trying to recall—weren't those homes fairly dissimilar to the project before us?
The Summerhill, I would say, probably has a more consistent theme. The Greenbrier, there are some custom homes, but again, probably not quite as much differentiation from an architectural perspective as this proposed project.
I just want to make sure that I am reading something properly. The Ordinance 2147 from 2006—or 2000—yes, 2005 and '06 states in it clearly this color restriction, correct? And that it's going to be recorded on the deeds, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so then, when the new property owner purchased this land, he purchased it subject to this ordinance, which clearly stated the lighting restriction, right?
Yes. I don't think you'll get any response that they weren't aware of this requirement.
And during the time that they were preparing and forwarding other information to us, because we've looked at these architecture and site applications, we—they never raised this issue, right?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, that's—I just wanted to make sure my recollection was correct, because I—I know we've had some dealings with this property in the past, but this has never been an issue, so now it's becoming an issue.
Sure, and the only thing I would offer is this—this was brought to staff earlier this year, so there have been a couple houses, but they have all been approved with the same requirement for the architecture and site, the deed restriction be applied. They're just simply requesting the consideration of an alternative method, if that's something the commission's interested in.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Paulson. Any questions of staff? Seeing none, I'm not sure which gentleman here is going to be speaking for the applicant. So perhaps you can step forward, and then I—I know I have your—I have two cards, so I know I have one of yours. Your name, sir?
Madam Chair, my name's Dennis Rosari. I'm with Davidon Homes, Vice President of Construction. Also with us this evening is Vance Graham, who will follow me, who is our architect with the San Antonio Lagone out of Newport Beach. Also present is Steve Abs, our Vice President of Site Development for Davidon and—
All right. Now, I'm going to ask about that microphone again, because I'm not—it's on. Okay, so I think maybe either pull it closer, or you can actually take it out and hold it close if you would like to.
We'll see if this works.
All right, that's perfect. All right, thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you. We'd like to thank staff for the effort they've put into this issue. Also, we've had the opportunity to work a number—and meet a number of times with Mr. Cannon and discuss this project. You are correct that when we originally acquired the property, we were very well aware of the LRV requirements for the project. However, in the process of developing this project, we've become—we have developed 19 very unique homes, very unique in character and architectural style that differentiate them from each other as well as the rest of the community, we believe. In the discussions with Mr. Cannon, we've evolved to the point from where we were looking at potentially just LRV averaging over the site to trying to honor the architectural style of those homes. And so the two plans that have been before you—for review and approval before, both Lot 3 and Lot 12, which happened to be the third board from the left and the third board from the right, those were approved with the LRV 30 colors on them. It's taken us quite some time, well over a year, to get this item before staff and to your attention, and how to approach this because of the hillside ordinance and guidelines, and trying to comply with that. It was determined more recently, earlier this year, that the best way to approach that was with a PD amendment, limiting it only to this project and not a citywide review or ordinance where another developer could come before you and say, "You've granted this on another piece of property." Given the uniqueness of this site and the limited visibility of the property from outside of the immediate lots, it lends itself to not being visible—highly visible—from the surrounding community, which allows it the opportunity to truly present something unique for the town of Los Gatos, as well as for Davidon Homes, to present 19 very unique and characteristic architecturally styled homes. We're trying to honor that with the cooperation of staff and Mr. Cannon's recommendation. The boards behind you present, as Joel indicated, the three concepts: the original color schemes across the top of the 14 boards, the compliant color through the middle of the boards, and the averaging color across the bottom. Again, when we started this, we were looking at averaging as a technique. Through the discussions with Mr. Cannon, we evolved that to trying to look at honoring the architectural colors true to the architectural style. In quoting Mr. Cannon's letter, which he did an excellent review of the project, we believe, if you look at the middle zone of those three—of those 14 boards, and what the compliant color is, the colors for the site at LRV 30 become very muted and muddy. And in Mr. Cannon's letter, he refers to it as Darth Vader Village. And that's one of the things we're really trying to avoid. We have a unique—and I continue to use that word, but we have a very unique opportunity here for—for 19 very custom homes that are not highly visible. And as Mr. Paulson indicated, there are homes that are on the hillside surrounding this project that do not comply with the LRV, that were approved either through the county or through the city prior to the LRV 30 requirement, that are purple or pink in color and much brighter than anything, or much more visible than anything that's visible from the site. I'll defer to Mr. Graham to talk to you and take you through the averaging and some of the architectural styles, and be available to answer questions afterwards. Vance?
Don't leave yet, though. Don't leave yet, okay? Because we'll take—right, your time is not up, but we'll take Mr. Graham separately. So questions here. Commissioner O'Donnell?
You referred to Mr. Cannon's letter, which I—I now have before me. His recommendations, I believe, are summarized at Page 3. And in those recommendations, he specifically talks about Parcel 1, Parcel 2, Parcel 6, Parcel 14, and Parcel 19. I don't—this isn't a memory test, but if you recall the letter and recall whether you agreed with his recommendations, I'm just trying to establish that.
We agree with his recommendations. However, on Parcells 1 and Parcel 19, he is recommending that we step down from the original color schemes, which, again, are on the top of the boards. Lot 1 is the one to the far left. Lot 19, I think, is the one to the far right on the—on the floor. And I think he refers to Lot 19 as the bright color being the trim on the house, whereas the body, I believe, is—is compliant. He's recommending on both of those situations that we tone down to an LRV 60 to 70 range, I believe. In specific review of Lot 1, if you drop to the bottom averaging scheme on that far-left board, that is a close to, I believe, an LRV 68 or 70 in that range. We really believe—and while we could live with that and will accept that—we really believe that the original color scheme for the Spanish-style home that is portrayed there is the true—is the top portrait, the white. That particular lot, if I may, very quickly— Sorry. One board we did not get up on the wall earlier was this exhibit. And this exhibit happens to show the 19 lots and their location, and the eight lots that are compliant, the eight lots that are—in Vance, I'm sorry, I can't quite read the— yellow is the—yellow is the original color scheme. So Lot 1 is at the top of the board at the far left. Vance is pointing to it. And it is in a valley. It is not visible from anywhere off-site. It is only visible as you come up the road into the site. You all have had the opportunity to drive up there recently. There's a completed home across the street from it that is now occupied, Lot 2. Lot 19 sits up on the lower left of the board, and it also is the one that—Mr. Cannon addressed. The other ones, I apologize, I can't recall specifically, so it is—I failed the memory test, but my wife will tell you that as well, so. Again, we think that it's just a great opportunity for very unique homes.
Did—you—we're—we're discussing what you don't have before you, but he makes a recommendation on Parcel 2. Did we understand you to say—or did I understand you to say that Parcel 2 has a completed home on it?
It is completed. It is completed with a compliant color. We have an agreement with that property owner that, depending the outcome of this hearing as well as any action by council, because it's our understanding this will go to council because of the PD amendment, that any action—we will go back and revise that color for that homeowner. As I said, it's taken us quite some time to get this before you and through staff, and there were a number of issues that we've tried to address, both with staff and with Mr. Cannon and our architects along the way to—
But the property owner, then, of 2 would be desirous of having a change?
We actually—all five of the first homes are sold. All five of them want the homes to be the original color schemes that we have presented. Lot 2 is closed. They would like the original color scheme. It's the second board from the left. Lot 6 is going to be closing in a—in a matter of a few weeks, towards the end of September. It's to the right of the Town of Los Gatos logo, and that homeowner also is requesting or would like to see the house the original color scheme in honor of the Italian villa architectural style. I believe that Mr. Cannon also agreed that it would be the best approach or color to honor that style. The other lots that are sold are 14, 16, and 18. 16 is compliant, and 16—jeez, where am I? 16 is on the floor behind you to the far left, thank you. And 18 is on the floor to the—almost the far right, and I—I'm sorry, 18 is compliant as well. So 16 and 18 are both compliant—I'm sorry, 16 is the original color scheme. It's a very—it's followed by the architectural styles of Frank Lloyd Wright, and so we would like to try and honor that with the lighter color of the original color scheme. 18 is compliant with LRV.
Just so I understand what you're asking for, and since I'm looking at Mr. Cannon's letter and not the report at the moment, Mr. Cannon discusses the parcels I indicated to you, 1, 2, 6, 14, and 19. And maybe you can refresh my recollection. You're asking for a number of others, too.
We're asking—this originally started out as a consideration of one lot with staff on Lot 2, with the thought process being that if it were approved on Lot 2 and staff could work with that, we would be able to discuss that on other lots going forward. I'm sorry to roundaboutly try to answer your question, but there is quite a bit of history on this. It's—it's just not something that was whimsically decided to bring before you. As a result, through the discussions, as I mentioned before, we—we took it from an averaging—an averaging just on Lot 2, and it became a PD amendment where we decided to bring all 19 lots forward. With that, we thought we would bring a four-pronged approach to the LRV color schemes. That was narrowed down with staff to—and I think with Mr. Cannon's support—to a three-pronged approach where it is compliant, averaging, and the original color schemes. And so we have categorized those, and I believe the staff report has summarized those, as well as Mr. Cannon, I believe, summarized those. And our—our letter kind of summarized which lots would be in which category. We do have—and Vance can walk you through—we—we only gave you—for simplicity—we only gave you the averaging scheme for Lot 2, which was originally the one that was to be submitted for review. We do have the averaging schemes for all 19 lots, and we can bore you to death with statistics and numbers and weighted averages and what have you, but we could walk you through any of those lots on how we determine the averaging technique.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, sir. Commissioner Seac?
How did you arrive at this averaging? Is this—a—is this a unique?
Well, we all sat around one night—
New industry standard? If you could just kind of walk me through this.
I was gonna joke that we all sat around a bar one night, and we're drinking, and, you know, wild idea came up. No, we actually were trying to find a way when these—when we started the project, we started with some designs, and the—the design juices, for lack of a better term, really got flowing. And we've—we really—I—we believe, and not just because I work for the company, but I really believe we've—we've created something very specific and unique for this—for the town as well as for ourselves. We've never done a project like this before. We've done some very high-end, very beautiful homes, but nothing of this magnitude. When we got into the fact that these were going to be 19 very distinctive homes and honoring architectural styles from all over the world—from Provence to Mediterranean to Spanish to provincial to hillside to whatever you can imagine, I mean, none of these are the same. We're honoring European architecture as well as American architecture all the way across. To put an LRV 30 across all 19 of those lots and end up with the color schemes that are through the middle of those boards in a very muddy tone didn't do justice to the project. We have been through architectural site reviews for all 14 out of the 19. The other five are pending, and we've met with staff on those. We started to look at what other schemes could work. How can we make this work? With the fact that the site is not highly visible, other than for—with the exception of a few lots, how could we make this work? I can't tell you specifically how we came up with averaging, but when we just were—when we discovered that it was the body of the house that is being looked at for the LRV, there is so much more to the elevation of the house—the glass, which is normally naturally dark, the roofs, which are naturally dark, typically dark. When you start taking all those pieces in and looking at the total massing versus just the elevation body color, it—it gave us a—a bigger element to work with. And so we—we took a look at, well, what if we do average it? What does it come out with? And oddly, interestingly enough, we were able to—to come up with color schemes that were a compromise between the LRV 30 and our original color schemes. That, again, evolved through the meetings with staff and with Mr. Cannon, where that works—if with the permission of the town—that works, but it doesn't honor the architectural style of some of the homes. And to do that, then we evolved back to the three-pronged approach.
Thank you. I'd like to now—oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Erickson, I didn't see your hand down there.
So presumably, there was a—a logic when the town adopted its—you've just offered us an—a another logic that would—that might suggest to us that we would need to rethink our hillside design guidelines based on—and we wouldn't do that tonight, but—but— but based on your experience in the bar or wherever you came up with this solution. So I was intrigued by your explanation. In your professional judgment, would your logic applied to this project be a better logic for us to apply in general in the town?
I'd rather not try to address this town wide for you, but Mr. Cannon's letter indicated that 30—a-an LRV of 30 is—is rather dark as a standard. I think he was saying that in one of the other counties within Santa Clara—that one of the other cities, excuse me, within Santa Clara, I think a 45 is their standard. We find 30 to be rather dark, especially in light of other projects we have done. We find 30 to be rather dark, especially in light of other projects we have done. Quite honestly, we have not come up against an LRV 30 in any other jurisdictions in northern, southern, northern or southern California or Nevada where we have built, so it's unique for us to encounter this. Certainly, we knew about it going in, but again, architectural style, we're trying to do something a little different. When it came down to, it's a PD and PD-specific, we had needless to say, great concerns about opening a PD for possible amendments, but we feel strongly enough on this that to honor the architecture, we would like to have commission consider this as an alternative only for this project, and not open it up for other developers or other projects to come before you and say amend the, amend the hillside ordinance. It's up to staff and commission and council whether you choose, obviously, to rewrite the hillside ordinance, and I can understand that's a monumental task.
All right, thank you, sir. If you can have a seat, you will have an opportunity to add anything that you might want to. Mr. Graham, you want to have an opportunity to address us?
I'll just make a few comments, basically Vance Graham with Vicini and Lagone Architects. Authenticity is, I think, the driver for us. 30 is a very low LRV from our experience as well. Larry's number of 45 fits pretty well to our experience. We're trying to be authentic, we're trying to be diverse. It is set up as a custom home subdivision, so I think going into it, we were concerned about the LRV 30, and then, excuse me, as we moved along, we realized it was becoming more and more apparent that the more diverse we got with the design, the more problematic it became. And we totally get the reason for the LRV. We've seen it in other jurisdictions, thinks it's a great idea. We didn't realize, I guess, the impact of an extra 15 points on the LRV scale in terms of sort of muddying things out. So the variety, the authenticity, and trying to create a street scene in a project that has the kind of feel that I think we're all after. So I think as, from an intent standpoint, I think we're all trying to achieve the same thing, and while I'd like to take credit for the LRV averaging, it's been around for a long time, and we thought, well, maybe it would apply here, especially because of the size of the homes. There's a large amount of material to take into consideration. It isn't a gray house or a white house or that sort of thing. So anyway, those are just a few sort of qualitative comments I thought I'd add.
Thank you. Don't leave yet. Are there any questions? Commissioner Bandami?
Do you have actual paint samples that we could see? I mean, we could look at these exhibits, but it would be nice to actually have paint samples that we could look at.
I believe that color boards were submitted for each of the homes?
So color boards for the homes that have been approved have all been submitted for those. They're in all of the individual files. We did not reproduce those for the meeting tonight. The other challenge, and maybe they can speak to it more, is obviously depending on your color copier, things turn out a little bit different. I would just ask, I believe that these are printed in such a fashion that they're about as close as you can get to actuality, but I'd look to them to confirm that.
Thank you.
We do have an example here. With your permission, I could approach the dais to give it to you, so you could look at it a little closer.
Go ahead, please.
Okay.
It is always the best way. However, we are under blue tinted fluorescent lights, so even the renderings aren't as representative as they could otherwise be in sunlight.
Thank you. And Commissioner Birch, I believe you had a question?
Yes, and I don't know if, you may not be the right person, may need to ask staff this. Are you familiar with Larry Cannon's letter?
Very.
Okay. So you're familiar with the graph that he has on page 2 that highlights? So I'm curious, and you're asking on your, that lots 1, 2, 5, 6, 8, 14, 16, and 19 will not comply, right? But when I go and I look, I'm kind of confused, because Lot 5 appears, at least on this, appears to comply at 26.87. 8 doesn't tell us anything, and Lot 16 appears to comply. So I'm curious what the change is from what he has here to what you're requesting is.
Mr. Cannon has, Mr. Cannon has taken the liberty, and he's done a great job at it, of summarizing all three concepts. So if you look across, he's got the original, the averaging, and the compliant colors, and noted that information that he's, we've provided for him on those colors.
Right.
Lot 5, the wall LRV, which is what staff predominantly looks at under the original, is 75. The overall LRV on the original is 26 point something, I'm sorry, can't quite make it out.
Yeah, 26.87.
687. And then you can see it's a little bit different on the rear elevation, but similar numbers.
Right.
And so what we're, what we're asking specifically on Lot 5 is that we would, and it's a Tudor home, it's located right to the right of the La Scata's town logo, and we're, the original color scheme, the one at the top of that board, is true to a Tudor home. The LRV compliant color in the middle of that board is not a Tudor home. It's a very muddy, distorted rendition of a Tudor home, Tudor-style home. The averaging scheme at the bottom, while could work, the best solution is the original color scheme. That house, if you drove the site, happens to sit at the knuckle as you go up the hill, so it's on the inside radius of the, of the road as you make the turn, completely invisible from anywhere off-site.
So on those sites that we just discussed, the, I guess, the variation from this LRV that you're looking for is based on the wall LRV. So for example, Lot 1, I was looking at overall at 56.1, but what it would actually be is 80?
That's correct.
I want to make sure I'm just understanding these numbers.
Yeah, I think it might be helpful, we have the wall, which is what staff usually looks at for the paint colors for the LRV.
Right.
The overall, I believe, is an averaged with that original wall paint color, so it is also technically an averaging number, so they've done that for each of the three variations, the original, so you have a wall LRV and then overall taking into consideration the other.
So you've taken in the LRV for the, the glass, the roof reflection, and stone?
Yes.
In the average?
We have. We've given Mr. Cannon an averaging of the compliant, the original color scheme, and then obviously the LRV averaging scheme.
No, yeah, and I understand that. I just wanted to, if we're looking at these are not going to meet the 30, what number in variance are they actually? So thank you. That clears that up.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Seeing that I have no other cards, I'm going to close the public portion of the public hearing.
Madam Chair, before you do.
Oh, yes?
One last comment, if I may.
All right.
We know this is out of character for the town to consider. We do ask your support in forwarding this on to the council. Exhibit 3 of your package by staff indicates that this project is compliant with the hillside design guidelines. We ask your support in moving this forward to council to try and get something unique for the town as well as for David on homes for this community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now, for real, I'm going to close the public portion of the public hearing, and look to my fellow commissioners for additional questions, anyone who wants to comment or introduce a motion. Commissioner O'Donnell.
I just want to ask staff a question. Mr. Cannon's letter, the way I read it at least, seems to suggest that our 30% is relatively low, and in fact, his recommendations, if I can call them recommendations, are substantially higher, and I'm wondering if anyone on staff has any recollection or information on how we came up with 30%?
Unfortunately, we don't. We can do some of that background work and provide that to either the commission and/or the council, should this move forward.
Has anyone on staff, has, has anyone on staff expressed an opinion opposed to what Mr. Cannon is suggesting in his letter of May 23rd?
We are not, as you know. Mr. Cannon's comments are advisory, and the ultimate decision is up to the recommendation of the planning commission and ultimately the decision of the council.
I'm trying to find out. I've heard all the reasons why it would be nice to change. I've heard that we have a standard which nobody remembers how we got it. I'm trying to find out whether there's anything in the staff to help us, find out whether there's some conflicting information here that we should consider.
If I could just ask staff a question, the hillside guideline that we are referring to is page 41, section I, point 2, and, and it gives the language of the shall, so this is why I'm paying close attention to it. Can someone tell me when that went into effect, when that specific section went into effect? Because we don't have, yes, I thought the town attorney might have the entire thing. I'm just looking for the, the year and how far along we were with development of the hillsides. Oh, you've got it. I'm sorry, I didn't see it in my packet.
I have a copy here. It was adopted by council January of 2004.
And what I would offer is, the previous hillside development standards and guidelines, which were a much thinner document, had the same requirement. When those were adopted, I'm not sure, but we can also gather that information.
And just for comment to my fellow commissioners, the, I'm, I am giving weight to the words "shall," and it's not that I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm still thinking this through, but the words "shall" do give me guidance, and secondly, the consideration of the hillside's development committee, the guideline committee, and I'm sorry, we don't have the, the basis of, or we don't have any comments from them in our packet or in the memory of the town staff, so, so those are just my comments. Commissioner O'Donnell?
I want to go back to your concern, which a lawyer would share, on the word "shall," except that since we're being asked to essentially recommend a modification, wouldn't that change "shall"? And perhaps it would change it to "shall something else," but if you're being asked to change something, why would "shall" bother you? Because if you say X shall be Y, and they're saying, no, let's make it A, then would seem "shall" would not be something of concern.
So Commissioner O'Donnell, just to shed more light on it, when I'm looking at following the hillside development standards and guidelines in this situation, and they are the guidelines that I'm required to follow, I believe, if they say the word "shall." That's just where my thinking was. I, I understand what you're saying, just want you to understand that that's, it's not that we shall consider, or we will consider, or could be considered, we shall not exceed the value of 30.
What I'm asking, and I'm not, I'm trying to ration it through, you may be absolutely correct, in which case I should change my opinion, but how could you ask for a modification if you say forever after the word "shall" shall be obligatory and no one can change it? That's what, that's what I'm understanding you to say, and if that's what you're saying, it'll be easier for me to disagree.
What I'm saying is that who has the authority to change it? Does the planning commission have the authority to change it? And I think Commissioner Seac and Commissioner Bandami, maybe you want to weigh in on this discussion?
Would you like to go first? Okay. A couple of questions first beforehand. I was looking through the guidelines. It's unfortunate Commissioner Telisfor isn't here, because she's the only one that could share some history. Do you know if our consulting architect was a consultant that worked on here? Because trying to understand the 30, the LRV for 30 seems to be a key component of this, but I am of the opinion, I understand that, I've heard merit on why this PD should be changed, but I myself are uncomfortable changing a PD that conflicts with a guideline that is very clear with an LRV number that is very clear. I feel like if we were to forward something, and we've done it in the past, like I would, I would say, I, I think there's merit with the change, but based on the current guidelines, it would have to be a denial. But there is merit, and I think it's the town council that makes those considerations versus us. That's just my opinion. But it would be helpful to know the 30 and, and why it was arrived at that, and also what would be helpful is, besides the fairness of it, because, you know, we're going to be making exception for one PD versus another, but is there any other, whether it's architectural or ecological, are there any other reasons why we should not consider a change to the 30? Nothing comes to mind, but I'm just curious if staff, in your analysis, we've heard the pro, is what's the con side?
So I would say the general basis for the LRV of 30, which may or may not be low, is to make sure that the homes that are built in the hillsides blend with the hillsides, and they don't stand out. So that lower value obviously gives you less options, but within those options, there's a better chance that it's going to be less visible from the valley floor, even if it is visible from the valley floor, using colors that are LRV 30 compliant. The other piece with relation to the "shall" standards is, you're correct. So planning commission, or planning staff, we don't have the authority to alter the guidelines. The planning commission, their recommendation has, has been discussed. The council adopted the guidelines through a plan development. Obviously, other projects have modified town code requirements, and so the planet, the council, through the decision, could, if they found merit with their proposal, alter it for this plan development through the guidelines. But the LRV of 30, I would say, is clearly to make sure that these homes blend in.
Commissioner Erickson?
So, as I understand, the staff has applied the standard about exterior colors not exceeding reflective value of 30 to each individual color on the body of the home. That's the historical interpretation that the staff has put on that sentence. Is that correct?
For the main body of the home, yes.
Right. So if I read the sentence, it says exterior colors shall not exceed a reflective value of 30 and shall blend with the natural vegetation. Is there any reason why one could not have interpreted that sentence to, to be the averaging of the exterior colors?
I don't know that we would say that it couldn't be interpreted that way. That is just not how staff has interpreted it thus far, and maybe Ms. Prevetti might have some additional comments, I'm not sure.
I would, I would just add that town practice has been to look at the wall color primarily as, and really looking at how it would blend with our California hillside vegetation, which does tend to be more on the browner side most of the year. So there, it is subject to interpretation, but our town practice has been that it's not. I'd also just like to add that while Mr. Cannon offered some opinions and other suggestions for the town's consideration, the town council did just recently approve a resolution to clarify the role of the consulting architect to be purely advisory. So you're no longer bound by the same rules that you were previously in terms of the role of the consulting architect. So we appreciate that the applicant worked with our consulting architect to try and find a solution, but we did want you to know that you have more flexibility in terms of how to use this information. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'd like to direct this to the town attorney, because as I understand, some of the comments that have been made, there's a fairly clear question here, and I guess the question is, when we take the mandatory language of the hillside development standards and guidelines, which says exterior colors shall not exceed a relative, reflectivity value of 30 and shall blend with the national vegetation, we're essentially being asked to change that insofar as this PD is concerned only. In other words, not even to change it, to come up with our own regulation for that, and had been my understanding, in part, that's the purpose of a PD. Some of us seem to be troubled by that purpose, and I was wondering if you could tell us again why, notwithstanding the word "shall" in hillside development, purpose of a PD is so one can avoid some of those problems that "shall" would otherwise have.
I believe you've done a pretty good explanation of it, but I'll kind of reiterate it there, is exactly, in fact, if you look on page 10 of the standards versus guidelines of the hillside, it even explains when a standard is a standard, and "shall" shall mean shall and non-discretionary, and guidelines are just that guidelines, but that has to do with the hillside regulations on its own, on its own face, has, and, and that's why staff doesn't have discretion, as someone comes in as a single-family dwelling, they're not a PD whatsoever, then they're As someone comes in as a single-family dwelling, they're not a PD whatsoever, then there isn't any discretion with that. But if someone comes in as a PD, that gives you the ability under the PD to deviate from your hillside or any other zoning setback requirements or other things.
Other than the substantive merits, somebody may just say 30 is great, and that's, I don't want to go, but if somebody feels that maybe 30 isn't always great, I understand you to say it would be in the purview of the Planning Commission. Again, we're only making a recommendation, to recommend to the town council that it consider whatever we come up with on this 30, except for certain circumstances. But that relies on the fact that this is a PD and not otherwise.
Exactly.
Okay.
If I may, Madam Chair, the other piece that you might want to look at is on page three of the staff report, where under project description, item B, the actual condition in this plan development is spelled forth, and under item C is the guideline itself. You'll see that the language in the condition is actually more strict than the guideline. It states that all exterior paint colors shall not exceed a light reflectivity value of 30. So that's even more strict for this particular PD. Again, I apologize, I don't know the history of the thinking of that particular condition, but my experience is that usually when conditions are written, they're done so quite deliberately. And again, quite honestly, this is why this matters before you, because should it reach the town council for their decision, I know they would respect your recommendation as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Erickson, then Commissioner Bandami.
So I would thank Ms. Pravetti for that, because I was going to actually point that out, which was the origin of my other comment. So I would offer that in this PD, because I believe it's possible, and not, and it's okay, to interpret an averaging of the exterior colors as being compliant with the Hillside Guidelines. I don't see that as being not compliant. I don't see, I don't read the Hillside Guidelines as requiring every individual color to have that reflective value. So using some methodology, which would average them, I believe would be in compliance, notwithstanding what the staff has done, use their own interpretation to apply. I don't have any beef with that. But we would need to make a recommendation to pull, in effect, if one were to accept my logic, to make this, make a recommendation to the council to make it compliant with the Hillside Guidelines in this case, and therefore less restrictive than the Hillside Guidelines are.
Commissioner Bandami?
Just to backtrack a little bit, page 56 of the Hillside Standards does talk about plan development projects. And it does state that in addition to all applicable standards and guidelines of the previous chapters, and then it goes on to talk about other standards and guidelines. So I'm going to take that to mean that plan developments are addressed in here in keeping with the LRV of 30. My concern too is we're actually looking at exceptions for 11 homes. That's a number of homes, not just one, for a deviation in not meeting the design objectives of our Hillside Standards. That's where I'm coming from.
Okay, fellow commissioners. So I'll just start off and then hope that someone's going to come up with a motion. I see that what we're missing in this Hillside guideline is a phrase added to the end. It says exterior colors shall not exceed 30, and they shall blend with the natural vegetation. And I wish they had also said, and they shall honor the style of architecture of a home. Because that's the piece that's missing here, that I think the applicant had a lot of merit in that, at least persuaded me about the need to change the color. However, I do also believe that Commissioner Seac had a very good suggestion, which was to, if we did move to deny and send it, recommend up to the town council, we could also put some language in so that we were acknowledging the merit of the discussion, even though we felt we were confined by the Hillside Standards. So that's my thinking at this moment. Anyone else? Commissioner Birch?
When I think of our review typically of a project and the merit of it, we tend to look at it as an overall. And so I was a little surprised when we got this, and it was so strictly color-wise to just the walls, because depending on the architectural style, what you see of a home between the wall and the roof line, everything can be almost an equal average. So, you know, I imagine when this was discussed, there was probably, obviously I wasn't here, I'm sure there was a lot of discussion, but I feel that we take architectural merit very seriously in this town. And I doubt that when this was written, it was thought, no matter what, it's just the paint on the walls. I'm certain that with all the information and the guidelines and everything we've been given, there would have been an overall review of that, which to me means we fall on these boards at looking at the averaging. And when I look across the board at the averaging, you know, you may not be as white on one as they may want, but it's still quite light, and I think it still maintains an architectural style. Whereas, I agree, when you start looking down the middle of the line, particularly, you know, the Tudor and a few others, you have definitely stepped outside of the architectural style of that home. So I guess what I would like to see us do is maybe, you know, we can't say, yes, we like these three, and, you know, eight of them are not going to fall anywhere. And I think I would very much like to have the town council weigh in on this averaging, because it can help maintain architectural merit while staying true to our Hillside Guidelines. So I think I would look to my fellow commissioners on your thoughts, but that's the way I'm leaning, because I feel it stays true to both.
I think that's a good suggestion. I'm just given to doing more than that, but clearly I'm going to be by myself on that. But I pass that along to the council. But I would think what the suggestion you made is a very good one, and perhaps a motion would help us move this along.
Okay. I'll give that a try, but I may look for some guidance on how to word this exactly, because I assume I'm recommending denial, but giving...
Here's your...
Okay. All right. So I'll give this a go.
The record can reflect that the chair of the commission suggested some language, but Commissioner Birch is going to finesse it. Thank you.
All right. So I am going to say that we forward a recommendation of denial of the PD ordinance, application number PD-14-003, as outlined in the recommendations below. I guess, do I need to say all these? Or can I just say the recommendations and then say what I want to? Do you? Okay.
You want to go beyond that? Did I say what you want? We'd like them to do.
Right. Yeah. As shown on page five, item B, recommendations. And what I would request, or recommend that the council do, is take a, consider the option of averaging the color schemes based on the architectural merit of the design of the homes. And I may maybe even take it a step further, perhaps there's an opportunity to have them just guide us in some direction in the future on how they perceive this writing. Should I recommend that in this? Because I feel like that seems to be something that is kind of up for...
It's possible.
Okay, that wasn't very nice and pretty, but that's my motion.
So Mr. Paulson or Ms. Pravetti, could you read back the motion as is before we ask for the second?
So the motion was to recommend denial of the PD modification to the town council with direction to consider the option for averaging as proposed by the applicant with, or based on the architectural merit, and to also provide further guidance for future applications and/or the consideration of LRV for colors for homes.
That sounds exactly like what I said.
And I have a second from Commissioner Seac.
Oops, I do. And if the maker of the motion would entertain some further language?
Okay.
I also would like to add that it would be specific to this plan development based on the topography, the location, and the uniqueness of the site, given how remote it is from viewing platforms within town.
Do you accept that?
Yes, I do.
All right. Commissioner Erickson, you did want to make a comment before we take a vote?
Have you had a second?
Yes, Commissioner Seac.
Okay, so I have a question for the maker of the motion. So it's not clear to me, if I understand the train of thought, you're saying to the council, consider and maybe even more than just consider, maybe accept the averaging approach. So it's not clear to me why you wouldn't have made a motion to do an amendment to the PD that amended the PD in that manner.
I guess I was under the impression, based on what was written here with the very specific lots, and that some would comply, some would average, some would not comply, that I was simply going to recommend denial on this and recommend that they review averaging rather than recommend changing it. But I would look to staff for that.
Yeah, I guess my question is, if I understood the sense of your, whatever you want to call it, the footnote to your amendment to the council, was to consider averaging as a principle in this, in this plan development. It wasn't about being specific to individual lots. And if that's, if I'm understanding what you're saying, then one could have introduced a motion which would have suggested to the, an affirmative modification to the PD that averaging be applied in this situation.
So we are, we are, we have a motion on the floor, and we have a second. And your comment actually is not a modification, right? It's just a comment offering really a different motion. Is that true, Commissioner Erickson? I just want to see procedurally where we are.
Okay, here's my concern, I believe, and I asked the class staff this. If we can accomplish, because I believe by recommending a denial, do they, so it's going to go to the, it's going to the council either way, no matter which we recommend, and there's no additional fee to the applicant, so it doesn't really matter from a cost standpoint to them, but it seems to me that it might matter. It's kind of like, okay, we're just saying, don't do this, but we're, but I guess what I was suggesting is the potential of thinking about doing this in a more affirmative, positive way to the council to consider averaging rather than just saying, oh, we don't, we don't want to do this, but oh, you might want to think about this. That's my only, which is why I won't support the motion as is. I would want us to take a more positive affirmative action on the motion, or have a motion for...
That's what we wanted to hear, Commissioner Erickson. So I will make my comments that I would support the motion, because I do feel constrained by section I point two of the Hillside Guidelines and the language contained therein. And I do not feel that, I do not believe that as a planning commissioner, that I can ignore that Hillside guideline, especially since it was specifically put into the PD ordinance 2147 as standard number 15. So it was contemplated and put into the ordinance. So therefore, I will support the motion. And so, Commissioner O'Donnell?
I will support the motion too. I just want it for the purposes of the council. The motion, I believe, would apply only to this project and only to the parcels involved in this project and asked for. I simply want to say that the staff has said this is how we consistently interpret that. If in fact the council wants to consider whether the staff should adopt the consideration of the averaging, that's something that we've discussed, and I would call that to their attention. But as far as the motion goes, it's more limited, and I do support it.
All right. No other comments? Let's take a vote. All in favor of the motion? That's four ayes, and opposed is Commissioner Erickson? Pardon me? Five to one? Yes?
You didn't count yourself.
Oh, I didn't count myself, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. All right. So Mr. Paulson, what is the next step for the applicant here?
The Planning Commission's recommendation will be forwarded to the town council, and they will consider the commission's recommendation and take a final action.
All right, thank you. And that concludes the hearing on that item. Do we have a report from the Director of Community Development?
Thank you very much. On August 19th, our town council met. The item of interest from a land use perspective was the El Gato Lane House. You'll recall that it came before you. This was the two-story home within a largely county pocket area. The town council voted to allow the house to be rebuilt with the two stories. This, of course, is a major topic, not only for Planning Commission, but also for town council, and as such, we do expect a future study session on this topic. So we all understand how we should be applying our residential design guidelines and code to newly annexed neighborhoods to make sure that we have some consistent definitions around immediate neighborhood and this notion of neighborhoods in transition. And that concludes staff's report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pravetti. Are there any members of the commission that wish to bring an issue to the attention of the commission? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.